We have, welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, March 26th. And does anyone have any announcements?
I want to remind the board and the public that there is a community event this Saturday, the Rotary Pancake Breakfast, which I think I have attended for the last six consecutive years. So I will be in attendance. I hope to see colleagues and community members there as well.
Brookline High School.
10:00 AM.
Right.
Eight, I think it's around at like 8:00 AM.
Tomorrow, there's a--
Breakfast?
Yeah.
Yeah. Tomorrow's an important high school building committee meeting.
That's correct.
And at 6:00 o'clock, there's going to be some discussion about the redesign of the MBTA Brooklyn Hills Station.
Right.
And then at 7--
We're going to be discussing other issues related to the project, especially logistics.
Okay.
That's important to the neighborhood and to the project.
We're starting to get into brass tacks here.
We are. We're definitely in the brass tacks.
Yeah, okay. And I know, we're going to be talking about some of the issues around the MBTA later on tonight here, because one of the warrant articles pertains to an easement. So we'll be, that'll be happening, I think, what is it, Saturday is the Rotary Pancake?
Yes, we talked about that already.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I was asleep. I'll switch.
I thought you hung on my every word. The truth comes out.
And then, this past weekend, we had a big event here in town.
Probably a big event.
Well, the one I'm thinking of is the opening of NEDA. And I see the chief running away.
Why ever pork? He did such a great job.
Right. I was about to sing your praises, Chief. And I think, you know, given what's happened in other communities, you know, we were really prepared and we had a plan. NEDA worked with the chief and Lieutenant Raskin, with our health department, with other departments. I'm sure DPW was involved. And all the planning really paid off. And things have been going smoothly. The, as I was quoted in the Globe, the apocalypse that some were predicting did not materialize, which is a good thing. And it's really a testament to the planning that, that the town did and, and some great staff at the police department. But it's, you know, NEDA also deserves a lot of praise for working with us and being willing to foot the bill for a lot of staff, not only a lot of town staff, but also they really had enough staff on site. And I, from what I heard, you know, unofficially, there were more customers here than in North Hampton, yet the waits were, you know, an hour or under versus in North Hampton, they, the waits were multiple hours. So I'd like to thank everyone who was involved in that effort.
Yeah, if I can add--
Sure.
I mean, the police did an incredibly good job, created a lot of goodwill, I think, among people who were there. NEDA, of course, but also the patrons who came, I think, you know, should get a shout out also. They're very orderly. There are no, from what I understand, no problems in terms of rowdiness or disruption or anything. And, you know, that's important to note because patrons of these establishments, and you get a reputation among some people in this town and elsewhere, that I think is undeserved and exacerbates, exacerbates problems that we would otherwise, that we would have with an opening such as this. So shout out to all three fellow members.
Okay. Any other comments, announcements, any public comment? I see none. And let's delve into our calendar. We have minutes for the 7th and the 12th.
I got some minutes, which I've given to Kay.
I've got some edits.
Yeah, a couple, too.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of March 7th and March 12th, all those, as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. And we have a grant from the Mass Office of Disability to address curb cuts in Coolidge Corner.
Hi, Kaitlin Starr, this is Starr, from the Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations. Our office is seeking the Select Board's authorization to accept the sum of $20,000 from a grant awarded from the Massachusetts Office on Disability. The office seeks the awarded grant funds to be appropriated into account 524010 Professional Technology. This full amount awarded will be used to hire contractors with DPW to address four perpendicular curb cuts at the intersection of Beacon Street and Harvard Street. In 2017, we were awarded $10,000 from the Massachusetts Office on Disability to conduct a pedestrian right-of-way survey on Harvard Street and Beacon Street. From that survey, we, that we were given from the human-centered, sorry, the Institute for Human-Centered Design, the Brookline Commission on Disability reviewed all of the data. And there was nearly 400 items to be addressed that range from things that needed to be addressed quickly that were not in compliance to things that would be best fixed and would be best practice. So this year, when we were applying for the grant, we chose four of the most serious items that needed to be addressed in the, right in the heart of Coolidge Corner. And we were awarded that grant. So we're just requesting the authorization to accept.
Okay. So, any questions from the board? I'll move that we accept the grant in the amount of $20,000 from the Mass Office of Disability to address curb cuts in Coolidge Corner. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
And we have a question of accepting a grant of $12,000 for the Mass Vest a Dog program to support comfort dog canine off, canine officer. Chief?
Good evening. Thank you for your earlier comment. I appreciate the support.
And pass that, pass that along to the, to the staff.
I certainly will.
Yeah. So we're, we're buying bulletproof vests for dogs.
Well, this Mass Vest a Dog actually is an organization that provides vests for, bulletproof vests for police dogs. But they're actually doing a pilot program for us, a grant for a comfort dog for--
Oh.
--from Golden Opportunities for Independence. So there's a one-and-a-half-year-old, fully-trained comfort and search and rescue dog that we will be the first department that Mass Vest a Dog has provided grant funding for in this area. And this dog will be assigned with a handler who will work in the schools and provide, we're also getting assisted funding from center communities from Brookline. I know in the fall, I came before you to ask for authorization for a gift, and they are also contributing towards this effort. So I think this is going to be really exciting for the department.
Cool. Okay. Any questions, comments?
How, how long does a police dog usually serve?
Well, this is kind of uncharted territory. So there are currently two other comfort dogs serving. Usually, a regular police dog serves between six and eight years. But that's a very active type of role. This is a comfort dog. So I would imagine that it will serve more for the life of the dog. It's a golden retriever. The dog we're getting is one-and-a-half years old right now. So I think there will be a number of years out of us.
Okay. Could you explain what role a police comfort dog plays?
Sure. So there's a lot of, this is kind of based off an opportunity that Golden Opportunities for Independence did before. So the dog can, is trained to be a comfort dog to people with autism. So the dog can work with our CIT program, kind of be a de-escalating presence. Some of the situations that the dogs have been used in and other places are, if there's been a child who's having a behavioral issue and, and, you know, can't respond to a certain location, the dog can be brought and given the child, you know, can you walk the dog into the school for us? Or it's a kind of a de-escalation. They can also, when there's a traumatic incident, the dog can come and comfort people. This dog is trained in search and rescue. So the idea being that oftentimes autistic children have a propensity to run or hide, and this dog will be able to help search for them and help find them.
Okay. So I'll move that we accept the grant of $12,000 for the Mass Vest a Dog to support the comfort dog canine officer. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a contract with StanTech for lighting and electrical final design engineering services on a phrase I never thought I would say again, the Carlton Street footbridge. Yet I'm saying it again. Oh, I missed, I missed one. Well, okay. Let's, let's do the cycle track on Essex Street, a contract with Mario Susi and Sons for $208,893.08. Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Ditto. I threw you off. I was wondering why you were speechless.
On Tuesday, March 12th, we, DPW opened bids for contract number PW19-18, and that's the Essex Street Cycle Track and Intersection Improvement Project. We received one bid from Mario Susi and Sons in the amount of $208,893.08. This contract will redo the sidewalk on Essex Street from Commonwealth Path to Dummer Street. And within that reconstruction of the sidewalk, a bicycle cycle path will, cycle path will be installed. The intersection at Dummer and Essex Street will have the intersection brought up to grade so it's like tabletop and it's a traffic calming measure. The bid was 15 cents over our engineer's estimate. However, I believe it's a, it's a valid bid. Mario Susi and Sons is a, is a very good contractor. They actually have the tumors concrete patching contract for the town. And we enjoy working with him. And I believe this number is a, is a reasonable number. That being said, I recommend the board award the contract to Mario Susi and Sons.
Yeah, I see there are trucks all over town.
Best, cleanest trucks around.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions, concerns? Yeah, the only concern I have is it's the only bid. Are we comfortable, given that this is a contract we have a lot of experience with? If you're comfortable, I guess I'm comfortable.
Yeah, I was a little surprised we didn't get more bids, but I don't know what the bidding climate is like out there, but.
Okay. So we're within the budget, Peter? I said, I know you, said it was over your estimate, but how about the budget?
Yeah, we had to, we had to use some of the older bicycle money to make up the difference.
Okay.
I think this makes a lot of sense. There's sort of a gap between the city of Boston cycle track there and then what's happening on the other side of Dummer Street and Brookline. So this is, it's a dangerous place just because you go from a protected cycle track to unprotected, back to a marked cycle, bike lane.
And that's a busy block.
It is a very busy block.
Yep.
These people come often to the area.
Right. Yep. Okay, so I will move that we, do what? That we approve and execute the contract, the Essex Street Cycle Track Intersection Improvements with Mario Susi and Sons of 36 Westwood Street, Dorchester, in the amount of $208,893.08. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now the Carlton Street Footbridge, a contract for $20,800 with Stantec for lighting and electrical final design engineering services.
As a result of the 25% design phase public meeting that Mass thought, it was evident that there was a lot of concern about what needs to be done with the lighting, the bridge and the path. That being said, we hiring Stantec to look into the possibility of lighting the bridge, and they did give us a proposal, and the scope of work they gave us includes enhanced lighting at both sides of the bridge, also lighting along the bridge and the ramps, and the installation of lease boxes, bucks on both sides of it.
And.
There will also be a call box on the bridge itself.
Is this just for design, or this is the actual work?
This will be, allow us to incorporate this work into the contract, so it's a design and also an estimate.
Okay. Any questions?
Just want to give you a status update on the project itself.
Sure.
We have an estimate of $3.69 million, and we're at 100% plan spec and estimate was submitted to Mass Art, and the project will be advertised September of 2019.
How much of the 3.69 are we on the hook for?
I think we have all but 10%.
90% of this?
I believe so, but I'll have to check.
Have we appropriated that kind of money for this thing?
I think we did.
Many years ago.
It's been so long that we hardly remember, but I have to tell you that I don't, I think it was in my initial years in town meeting, and I was there since '88, that we started talking about this thing, so it's been a really long time.
Yeah, it, it's listed in the state tip for 3.69 million.
My, I don't know what the figures are. My recollection is that we appropriated roughly a million dollars. I think it was about eight or 10 years ago, with the vast majority of the expense being borne by, by the state. And we were required, just as a refresher, to do this project as a condition of the MIPA process, so I think it's a, it's a good deal for us. We get flood control and beautification, increased access to the park for a relatively small sum of money, when you take the entire project budget into account.
Okay. I'll move that we award and execute the contract in the amount of $20,800, Stantec Consulting, for lighting and electrical final design engineering services on the Carlton Street Footbridge. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Pepesturgeon is here to talk about snow, but this is paying, paying for it.
If we can get through this week and next week, I think we're, we're good to go with the snow, so.
Now knock on somebody's door.
So this is extra work orders. Why don't you just briefly tell us about it?
Yeah, let me just bring you up to speed. On, in January 22nd, the town administrator authorized the invocation of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D, which allows us then to overspend our snow and ice budget as to get through the winter. This is generally standard practice for, for our winter season. We then do what we have to do as to get through the winter, and then in, in the months of April and May, we reconcile the, the, the snow and ice expense accounts, try to recover some of it through surpluses in the Public Works Department, if there is any, and generally there is some. And then the remainder, we will come back before you to do either into departmental transfers or request the balance from a reserve fund transfer. So that'll all happen in the next several months, but in order to get us through to that point, so we can pay our bills with the, with the vendors, we need to do extra work orders on each of the four contracts that we currently have for snow and ice control. The first one is with DeLisandro Corporation, who provides us with the bulk of our snow and ice rental equipment. This is extra work order number nine. The reason it's number nine is this contract was originally awarded in 2013, and it was for a period of time, and then we have the right within that contract to do contract extensions. We last extended this contract, or the board did, in September of 2018 for a one-year term, which is, which will be up this, this year. The extra work orders counts consecutively, you know, from the beginning of the contract, so since 2013, we're all, now at extra work order number nine, and the amount is $175,000. Extra work order number three for Northeastern Tree Service in the amount of $43,000. This covers expenses, storm-related expenses and emergency response when we have significant wind events related to snow and ice. Extra work order number three, in amount of $2,800 for Park Landscape Associates. They're the contractor that provides assistance to us for clearing snow from the public school. And that's, that contract also was awarded back in FY17. And then finally, extra work order number three, also again for Green Acres Landscape and Construction for $15,000. This contract is for the repairs to fencing damage by snow removal operations generally around our parks. This contract was also awarded in FY17, and will be up for renewal again in another year. So the four extra work orders, total $243,800. If everything holds right now, we should be okay with that, and then we'll be back before you in a few months to reconcile the entire account.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah. Yeah. The school grounds maintenance contract, I assume that's just for snow removal at the school site, not the surrounding streets and sidewalks?
No, that, that's at the school site.
Okay. So is, is, is snow removal on the surrounding streets and sidewalks is done under your budget?
It's, it's all, it's all done under our budget.
Well, I mean, but by.
Yeah, but it's done by highway and sanitation staff and also park, parks staff and water and sewer staff, yeah, DPW staff.
Yes.
Yes.
So I just want to say that, just to make note of the fact that you do an incredible job removing snow during snow events from sidewalks and, and roads around schools so that children and others can have safe access to those schools. I'm not sure that everyone realizes that, you know, the job that you do for that purpose.
Yes. And we also have the added burden with, with the on-street teacher parking now that seems to be popping up everywhere. You know, once schools, in order to get schools ready to open, we not only have to clear snow from the schools themselves, we also have to remove the snow from the adjacent streets so that the teachers and parks on the, on the street, so it all has to be done, and it all has to be complete before we can okay them for opening.
So having a school in your neighborhood is a great benefit, especially when it snows.
Right.
Especially if you're along the route that the sidewalk tracker uses the plow to get to that school.
Right. Okay, so we'll, I'll move that we approve the, these four work orders related to snow and ice control under Mass, Chapter 44, and extra work order number nine, the amount of $175,000 for DeLisandro Corporation, and extra work order number three, amount of $43,000 for Northeastern Tree Service, extra work order number three in the amount of $10,800 for Park Landscape Associates, extra, extra work order number three in the amount of $15,000 for Green Acres Landscape Construction. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have pavement management, maintenance, and support services for Stantec, $36,400. Mr. Ditto.
So this is a three-year contract with Stantec, and it's for the maintenance of the town's pavement management system. The work will involve an annual survey of 33, one-third of the town's roadways, which is approximately 33 miles. We have around 100 miles of roads in the town, so this will entail doing a, a survey of 33% of our roads, and we'll do that once a year for three years. And from that survey, we will get a pavement condition index, as well as a estimate of the financial need that we'll have in the future.
Okay. Just, I think we're running about 10 minutes behind, so just hang on there. Okay, any questions? I'll move that we award and execute the contract for pavement management, maintenance, and support services, Stantec Consulting, in the amount of $36,400. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have another contract for the reconstruction of Pearl Street with IW Harding of West Bridgewater for 1.189,673,025. Mr. Ditto.
So we opened bids on March 12th for this project. We received two bids. The first low bidder was IW Harding Construction Company, and his bid was 1.189, $1,189,673.25. And MDR Construction Company was the second bidder at $1,257,639.84. This project involves a complete overhaul of Pearl Street, which will involve removing the pavement, removing or resetting, resetting granite curbs, installing a cycle track and put in the sidewalk. We'll also be installing antique lights, and at the entrance to the MBTA bus, train stop, we'll be putting pavers in a raised crosswalk in that area. IW Harding did, has worked for the town about five years ago. They were the low bidder on a portion of the capping of the real landfill. We, we had a good experience with them then, and I have no reason to believe they won't be the same way.
Okay.
And there is no gas in this street, so we don't have to worry about any kind of.
Well, that's, I'm glad you anticipated that, Mr. Ditto. This is an exciting project. It's been in the works for as long as I can remember, since the early 2000s. This has been under consideration, and so this, and this is all part of the Brookline Place project, so this is very, very exciting. And Gateway East, so. Any questions? I will therefore move that we award and execute the contract for the reconstruction of Pearl Street with IW Harding Construction of West Bridgewater in the amount of $1,189,673.25. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. And we have another contract for the Brookline Exterior Restoration, $79,500 with Calhess Restoration and Weatherproofing. And this is for the reservoir, Brookline Reservoir Gatehouse.
Good evening. Erin Gallantine, Director of Parks and Open Space. So this is the first of three contracts that you will see for the Brookline Reservoir Restoration Project. This one is for the cleaning and repointing of the exterior masonry and replacement of windows and doors at the historic gatehouse. We're eager to start this component of the project as soon as possible, and half of this is funded with MHC grant funds, and half of this is funded with CIP tax funding.
Okay. Any questions, comments? I'll move that we approve the contract for the Brookline Exterior Restoration, and this is for the Brookline Reservoir Gatehouse in the amount of $79,500 with Calhess Restoration and Waterproofing Corp. of Westwood. All, all those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. And we have a change order in the credit amount of $10,788.29 with Contractors Network for the UAB and Lynch Recreation Elevator Modifications. This is my favorite kind of change order, an actual credit. It's rare that we see this.
Especially tonight.
Yeah. We've been spending a lot of money. Might as well get a tiny bit back. Mr. Masak.
Yes, Ray Masak, Building Department. Yes, this is a credit. We have unit prices typically in our elevator contracts that are used, and some of the other work was determined by the engineer not to be needed, so we had one add and one, two, and five credits proposed.
Okay. Any questions? I'll move that we authorize the change order in the credit amount of $10,788.29 with Contractors Network for the UAB and Lynch Recreation Elevator Modifications. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have a question for authorizing and executing contract amendments for additional services, for additional test pits and geotech engineering for laser survey of power lines in the amount of $49,940 in connection with the Brookline High School project. Mr. Masak.
Yes, this amendment is for due diligence. We need the test pits to determine what's going on beneath 111 Cypress, and then the laser survey of the power lines is to determine exactly where the power lines are, because that is impacting the construction of the project.
Okay.
Yes, we need this.
Okay.
We need to prove it.
And we won't hold it back. I'll move that we, oh, any comments from the board? I'll move that we authorize execute the contract amendments for additional services, for additional test pits, geotech engineering, for laser survey of power lines in the amount of $49,940 in connection with the Brookline High School project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And lastly, for Mr. Masak, it's a contract amendment for additional services for the Coolidge Corner Library Improvements with CBI Consulting for asbestos monitoring for $1,555.
There was asbestos in the interior renovations, and so when you do any kind of asbestos removal, you have asbestos monitoring, and that was provided by the consultant so we could finish the project.
Okay. I'll move, any comments? I'll move that we authorize execute the contract amendments for additional services for the Coolidge Corner Library Improvements with CBI Consulting for asbestos monitoring in the amount of $1,555. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. And we have a temporary wine and malt beverage sales license for Original Gravity for Opera Concert to be held on Friday, April 12th, from 7:00 to 10:00 at 17 Station Street. Looks okay?
I've reviewed the paperwork.
I've reviewed the paperwork, S has the police department, and we see no reason to oppose this license request.
Okay, so I'll move that we grant this temporary wine and malt beverage license. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to our main calendar, and I said we'd be ten minutes late, and we're eight minutes late. So I estimated good. So we have the question of adopting the Brookline High School Environmental Club's Green New Deal Resolution.
Yes.
Ms. Heller.
So the Climate Action Committee last night considered this and recommended that it be adopted by the select board, and we had a wonderful presentation by these BHS Environmental Club students and Lawrence students, they've also gotten involved in this movement, and their teachers. So that, Mr. Justin Brown is Lawrence's teacher, and Anjali Mitra, who's right there, is a high school student, and I think she's going to tell us about the presentation, and she's been the one who's organizing it and has met with us about it.
Okay, hello. So my name is Anjali Mitra. I'm a junior at Brookline High School, and I'm here with a group of concerned young people who are worried about their future and the environment.
As they should be.
As they should be. So our goal here is asking the select board of Brookline to endorse the Federal Green New Deal, which is a resolution that aims to transition our economy from a fossil fuel-based economy to infrastructure devoted entirely to renewable energy, and also in this transition aid in helping the communities most impacted by climate change, which are usually poorer, more marginalized communities. So that's an overall overarching description of the Green New Deal. We can give you more specifics later, but that's kind of what we're doing. So I want every, and we're going to have some personal accounts about why we should care about climate change from various speakers, so if everybody who's speaking can make a line behind me, starting with Siah, thanks.
In order, yes, in order, please.
So you're making my job easy.
We get tons of practice making lines at school. This is child's play.
See, that's the sign of effective advocacy, to make the job of us appear easy.
Awesome. Cool. So we've come to you as students already experiencing the adverse effects of climate change, and as youth with futures at stake, so we're asking you to sign the Green New Deal, the resolution. I have personally missed school back in my home country of Iran, where my home city, Tehran, was too polluted for us to walk outside and go to school.
Sorry about that.
I used to have to climb the hills behind my house to catch a glimpse of the actual sky because there was a dark layer of pollution covering the city. So you had to kind of get up to higher elevation to actually see blue rather than gray. I'd like to add that all other Massachusetts representatives and senators, except for Richard Neal, have already co-sponsored the Green New Deal Resolution. We are urging Richard Neal to sign on. We'll get him soon. And we're not just asking you to protect our environment or our individual health. We're asking you to stand up for a whole generation and protect our future. So we're asking you to sign on to this resolution. Thank you.
Hi, select board. My name is Krista Lee, and I'm here today to talk about how we should stop climate change. So if you sign the Green New Deal, more animals will be, they'll be in a healthier environment. So every day I see on the street a lot of animals scavenging for food in garbage barrels and carrying off plastic, very big pieces of plastic. And once I was at the beach, and I saw, as you know, seagulls reside in the beach, and I saw many seagulls in their beaks. They had a lot of plastic, like plastic containers. So I go to China over the summer, and every year I notice that the air quality gets worse and worse, and I fear that America's air quality will turn into that. Not right now, but maybe like in future years it might happen. Actually, from my observations, face masks are becoming more trendy, and more people are wearing them, but I don't think that can hide the fact that people can't breathe in smog-filled cities. I'm really scared for my future and in the far future for my children. This is why we need to take action right now to save Earth's health. Thank you.
Thank you.
What have I done? There we go.
Hello, my name is Evan, and I'm here to urge you to pass a resolution supporting a Green New Deal. Today is a very special day to me because it is my birthday. Normally, my family would be eating dinner celebrating, but because I feel so passionately about this cause, I am standing here addressing you. But it was just one birthday. In fact, scientists are telling us that twelve years, in twelve years, our life may look different. From then on, what matters most to us will be gone. Two years ago, I made four resolutions for my future self. One, I'd get good grades in middle and high school. Two, I would get into MIT. Three, I would Internet Google. And four, I would start my own company. But now this is not the case. I'm still getting good grades, but now I'm pursuing a path in technology for the climate, for my generation, for your generation, and for future generations, because I am worried about the future of humanity, and I fear that their world is going to be very different. Thank you.
Thank you. And good luck aspiring to MIT.
And happy birthday.
Right.
Good evening, members of the select board. My name is Justin Brown. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Lawrence, and I'm here to tell you a couple of things. First, the following climate action organizations, all of whom are committed to pushing for bold climate change with an ever-increasing sense of urgency, have endorsed this campaign to ask you to pass a resolution supporting the Green New Deal. The Sunrise Movement, I Matter, Three Fifty Mass for a Better Future, Brookline Mothers Out Front, and Elders Climate Action. Each of these groups stands behind you, behind these young people, and the courageous actions that they're taking to fight for a livable future. Secondly, I want to tell you about something I think that you can relate to. Teachers and elected government officials have very different jobs, though there are some key through lines. We're both important parts of a community, and we're both charged with bringing our professional best to answer some really important questions, including what are the best ways to care for the communities in front of us? How will we best prepare them for the future? We must think in ways that are both short-sighted and far-sighted, taking care of the now with an eye towards the future. As I'm sure you are, I'm now troubled by added questions. What will the future hold? What do they really need to know if the future holds such frightening uncertainties? But the most troubling question bouncing around in my head is the one that will be asked of us, all of us, when these young people are older. What did you do when there was still time? So I urge you to use the power that you have to add this town's voice to those others supporting a Green New Deal while there's still time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amari Sousa. I am ten years old, and I am here with my teacher, Mr. Brown. I urge you to pass the resolution supporting the Green New Deal. I'm here to tell you how climate change has affected my family. Hurricane Maria left Puerto Rico in a big mess. She wiped out the entire electrical grid for the whole island. She left many people hurt or without homes. I have family in Puerto Rico, and they didn't have electricity for months, which is bad because they can't keep cool without air conditioning, and they couldn't cook much because their refrigerators weren't working. They couldn't keep the food cold. They didn't have light, so they were left in the dark for months. We had to send them care packages so that they could have the things that they need to survive. Scientists tell us that climate change makes storms like Hurricane Maria much, much worse. We need to act now to prevent them from getting even worse. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Leona Resnikoff, and I'm a senior at Brookline High School. I read the news sometimes, and, but whenever I do, I always see things that make me sad. There's always, there are islands going underwater because of rising sea levels, leaving thousands of people displaced. There's animals, entire species of animals going extinct from deforestation and changes in habitat. Just every time I open my phone, there's more and more things coming out, more bad things. The newest one that makes me really worried is complete societal collapse, so it's not looking good. I don't want to be seeing these kinds of articles popping up in my feed every single day. I want these all to stop. I want the change to stop. I want the passage of the Green New Deal so that I don't have to be worried about these things, so that when I see the news, there's more good news and less things that make me worried. So, yes, thanks. Is there enough time for me to share a story as well?
Sure.
Okay. So I wrote this on the way to the Climate Action Committee meeting yesterday, so some of you have already heard it, and I apologize. But when I was writing it on the way to that meeting, I thought a lot about what to say. I could have talked about the summer camp that I used to go to, and I'm going back this summer, which has suffered not one but two flash floods in the last decade and a half. I could have talked about my favorite place to be over the summer, Cape May Point, New Jersey, that's slowly washing away from coastal erosion. I could have talked about being on the Harbor Islands and removing all the invasive species there that have been moving farther north, and also all the ticks I got there because they like the warm weather, too. And I could have talked about the disheartening pollution that I saw when I hosted a sanctuary cleanup in Brookline earlier this year. But I'm not going to talk about myself. Instead, I am going to talk about my cousin. So last year, I was asked to speak at my aunt's wedding about nature and how I wanted my aunt's and the baby that was on the way to interact with the natural world around them, and I thought about the parks I'd been to, the landscapes and views that I'd seen, all the swimming and hiking and sightseeing that I'd done, and then it hit me that my cousin might not have those same opportunities. By then, the parks that I'd been to, the views I'd seen, they might be gone. So then it hit me again that this wasn't about views or parks or whatever, it was about survival. So we already see the adverse effects of climate change in hurricanes, droughts, wildfires. So this is our reality, and this is my cousin's reality, and it's only getting worse. So needless to say, I freaked out a little bit while thinking about my cousin and then thinking about writing this. I didn't say this at the wedding. I thought it would be like way too sad. But now, my cousin is born, and she is six months old, so she is old enough to, you know, sit up by herself. She just started eating actual food. She learned how to laugh, like when she thought something was funny, that was really funny. But she is way too young to have a say in her future, and she's relying on us to make that decision for her, and that is a huge decision to make. We can do nothing and leave her to inherit a damaged and broken world, or we can fight proactively for a future where she can thrive. So this is for the sake of not just our generation, or your generation, or her generation, it's for the generations that come afterwards, and it's us fighting for the people who don't have a voice, for the people who don't have a say. They're either too young, or they're marginalized, and they can't hear us speak, or they can't speak. So I'm asking you guys to support the Green New Deal because you have the opportunity to say yes, and that's something that I think is really important in the future because the people in the future do not have the opportunity to say yes or no. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll tell you, it's great seeing you guys here. Takes a lot of courage to get up in front of the TV cameras with our vast TV audience, which I joke about all the time. But this is a serious issue. I think this is the most serious issue confronting us, and to me, the most disheartening thing is what's going on in Washington with the folks in charge of the government down there are just denying what's going on. And unfortunately, if, you know, getting us to say yes, I think, is an easy sell, and getting your congressional delegation in Massachusetts, perhaps even some of the surrounding states here, is an easy sell. But when you go broader, there's a lot of climate change denial that we have to break through, and, you know, the president is probably the biggest climate change denier, and it's very disheartening to see some of the stuff that he's doing, and even some of the stuff that's going on in the Senate, and what they're going to try to use this as a weapon against the folks who are trying to advocate for this issue. But I'm more than happy to say yes, and come on board and do what I can to bring this along.
Okay, and if you have any questions?
Sure.
There's lots of people here who are willing to answer.
Yeah, okay.
I think this is a great resolution. I think it's really tightly worded, and I am in full support of it. The one thing that I observed is in the resolved clause, I think if we insert one more word, it's a stronger exclamation point at the conclusion, and wonder if my colleagues agree with me. I would suggest, propose maybe, that we insert the word environmental in front of the word principles in the...
So why don't you read the...
...resolved clause. Yep. So therefore be resolved, the Brookline Select Board calls on members of Congress to vote favorably on the resolution released on February seventh, two thousand nineteen by Senator Ed Markey and Representative Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, and therefore introduce legislation that incorporates the environmental principles of the Green New Deal.
I have no problem with that. I do, I mean, I think the kids, the students, I won't call them kids, but students have worked hard to make, to focus their energy on the environment in this resolution, and they have made that very clear by their words tonight, by their words last night, and how what they believe is going, is happening in this resolution. I think that that does strengthen it, and I'm all in favor of it. I'm in favor of this effort. I'm thrilled, as I said last night, you know, so many of us who have been worried about this are gray and crotchety like me, and it's fabulous to see young people stand up and say, wait, this affects us, we know what's happening, we want to change. And so I'm so proud of you all for doing this and flending your voices. I think if any of the climate deniers are going to listen to anyone, it's going to be you. And so I hope that your fellow, your compatriots across the country will do a great job of convincing people that this is what needs to be done, and thank you for your efforts.
Climate denial is a big problem in this country. I've lived in red states many years, and I think it's important that we be very careful about how we characterize climate denial. There are people who just out and out deny climate, deny science, and that's one group. There's also a large group of people who... There's also a large group of people who are not on the side of fighting for climate issues for other reasons. And we have to accept the fact that those reasons are honest and therefore changeable. And we have to figure out, how do we change those reasons? We're not just talking about our bubble here in Brookline. We're talking about how do we change on a much more global scale, at least national scale. A lot of people are not involved with climate action matters because they're ignorant. And we have to figure out a way of speaking to them and convincing them to take real steps to address the problem. Another group of people, I think this is very important, are overwhelmed. Problem seems so big, and the solution seemed to be so big also, that they feel, "There's really nothing I can do." So, therefore, I think it's important when we talk about resolutions like this resolution, that we figure out, how do we make our big global solutions practical and workable so that people see how you get from here to there to a solution to climate problems? And that's why one of the changes that I suggested was not to say that we are supporting the Green New Deal, because that's just one way of approaching this issue, but rather, we're asking Congress to pass specific legislation that will address the principles of this so-called Green New Deal in concrete ways. And that's important because the way you make change in this country, you know, it's not by fiat, although we have someone in Washington who thinks that, you know, it does work that way. The way we make change in this country on something like this is to come up with legislation that goes through a process that looks at whether this is going to work, whether this is the best approach, and resolves in legislation that addresses specific issues, not, you know, just broad, general statements, you know, that we need to attack climate change. So, you know, I'm willing to support this resolution because it's now focused on the legislative action that we're asking Congress to take to address the principles in the Green New Deal. So...
Boy, that's a lot to follow. I'll just say that I grew up in Maine, where there's a long history of environmental conservation. And some of it started when they realized that they were overfishing, and it was putting a lot of people's livelihoods at stake. Sustainability is something that we now all understand right now, but it's a concept that has developed over time. I think a lot of our choices as individual people and society at large, there were no immediate consequences to a lot of choices that we have made. And that is something that we need to address and change, because every choice has a consequence. You might not see it in your bank account the next day, but over time, you know, the trees are not there, the fish are not there, the air quality degrades. So, I'm really proud that we're moving in a direction where I think more and more people are realizing that we have to hold ourselves accountable for the choices that we make as individuals and also as a society at large.
Okay. So, what I'll do is I'll move that we authorize the chair, since it's set up for one signature, to sign this on behalf of the board, that we accept the resolution with the addition of the word "environmental" inserted before the word "principles" in the resolve clause. And we'll need a Word copy of the document so we can do that and have the computer print it. So, all those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you so much. Okay.
Well, stick around. We have another climate action item.
So, this one is a fun item. And this is a question considering entering into a friendly, with an emphasis on the word "friendly," competition between Newton and Brookline with the objective of getting additional residents to opt up to the 100% renewable electricity option in the Brookline Green Electricity Program. Ms. Sokol.
Thank you. I'm Diane Sokol, and I'm a volunteer with the Brookline team of Mothers Out Front. For the past nine months, I've been leading the effort in Mothers Out Front, along with Climate Action Brookline, of trying to provide additional outreach for the town of Brookline for the Green Electricity Program, working with Maria Morelli, trying to get our friends, our neighbors, schools, anybody, one person at a time, to do that opt up to 100% green electricity. And it's really an important part of the planning for Brookline's carbon-free by 2050 is getting people onto this 100% green electricity and moving forward. So, one of our outreach effort ideas was having a friendly competition. Nine months ago, Arlington was the closest town that we could do this with. But starting in March, Newton has started their green electricity program, and we were approached by Green Newton and Mothers Out Front in Newton to stage a friendly competition, which seems like a great idea. So, you know, climate change knows no town boundaries. So, we all win, whether Newton wins or Brookline wins, I think we all win. The details haven't been worked out, whether it's a nine-month, or, you know, getting us to the end of this calendar year, whether it's just residents or residents and businesses, we'll make it work out. But just another way to get publicity, another way to reach out to people to say, you know, "We can hold back the fossil fuel industry. We can hold back climate change, and we can beat Newton." At least we can try. So, we're looking forward to it. It's a fun thing, but since it does involve a town program, we felt that we needed endorsement. And then, Newton Mayor Ruth Ann Fuller has already endorsed this idea.
Okay. Now, of course, we're entering this competition at a distinct disadvantage because they're twice as big as we are.
No, no. It would be based on a percentage.
Ah, okay. So, you got that figured out.
I thought you were going to say that we're in an advantage, because our program's been running for two years. We already have 700, 800 people signed up. But they have better rates. It might be easier to sign people up, so...
They have better rates? Really?
Oh, yeah. They entered the market since their program just started.
But they also have, they don't have mass Class 1 recs, I don't think.
Yeah. I don't know the exact details. Brookline's program is better.
Yeah, definitely. So, let me just tell you that we can, the Climate Action Committee considered this issue last night and voted to recommend to this board that we adopt this program, thanks to Diane and Mothers Out Front for bringing it forward. I'd also like to point out to our audience, and especially the students involved here, that this is something that you could do at a local level to really make a difference in Brookline and in your own lives. And that is, and obviously, you probably don't pay the electric bills. Your parents do, so you could put some pressure on them, no, no, no problem, to join our 100% Brookline Green Electricity Program. And I think Mothers Out Front and CAB and the Climate Action Committee have been talking about, how do we get people to modify their behavior in Brookline so that we can further the goal of becoming fossil fuel-free? And it's difficult. And as Diane said, it's by one, one by one. But I think in the long run, the goal, that process is worth it. So, I think we'll be keen to you to enlist your support, just to give you a heads up.
Actually, one thing I forgot to mention is that we use this person-by-person outreach to also get people to look at their electricity bills and to understand what's in there and what they can do for energy conservation. And Mothers Out Front has energy efficiency presentations. So, it's not only just signing up, but also trying to find ways to reduce your electricity.
So, if someone wants to opt up, what do they do?
In my pocketbook, I should have a stack of these green and white cards from the town. It's 1, 2, 3. Get your EverSource account number. Go to BrooklineOptUp.com and check your bill in a few months.
Okay.
Yeah. And you can go to, also, you can search the website, the BrooklineMA.gov website, for Brookline Green Electricity.
Yeah.
And that'll give you all the rules of doing, of opting up. And there are other things you can do. Obviously, you can conserve, as Diane said. You can make sure you don't leave your cellphones plugged in and your appliances that you're not using. You can, those are small-ticket items. You can go big-ticket items and get an electric vehicle. There are many things you can do. So, we'll go onward and upward, do the best we can. But I think educating our community is very important.
Okay. So, I will move that we enter into a friendly competition between Newton and Brookline with the objective to get additional residents to opt up to 100% renewable energy in the Brookline Green Energy Program. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Yeah?
You are free to leave. We have to stay.
Yeah.
My God. You did really great. Thank you for keeping it moving.
Great. Okay. Fantastic, of course. We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Okay. Couple of housekeeping items. We have a question of filling a senior public health inspector position in the health department. Mr. Maloney.
Good evening. Pat Maloney, the Assistant Director of Public Health and Chief of Environmental Health. This is one of our critical positions. It's one of our frontline inspectional positions. This person would be inspecting restaurants, housing environments, nuisance complaints, code enforcement, as well as doing our educational efforts and the various licensing and code enforcement aspects that are related to the public health department. The person is leaving our department to take the Director of Public Health position in Westwood. And so, we wish that individual well. So, we ask that you fill this position as soon as possible, because it is critical for our frontline of public health protection.
Right.
I would also like to mention, in reflecting on this position, we've supplied 13 health directors through my Environmental Health Division over the years. I think it speaks well for our division. We say, if you go through the Brookline Environmental Health Program, they grab you in other communities. Just to rattle off the communities, Westwood, which is going to have the new health director, Belmont, sound familiar? Milton, Framingham, Watertown, Braintree, Lowell, Everett, Redding, Melrose, they have a combined system, Topsfield and the Hunt, one of our staff is serving as two communities, and in Duxbury. And this is something that, reflecting on, it's, I've had great staff over the years, and it's something Dr. Jedd and I will be working on, to see how we can retain this great staff. Really, you know, I have all MPH staff who are inspectors, so we'll be working with the HR department to see what we can do to try to keep these great individuals here in Brookline and serve us for longer term. And I think that's what we need to look at, to have it so that there's additional steps for individuals or additional advancement within these positions. But for now, we ask that you fill this position for us.
Okay. Well, I guess it's bittersweet that we seem to be the training ground for the other health departments for Eastern Massachusetts, but it's a testament to you and the department that the departments thought so highly of, that people would move on to these positions. I, in my own career, have always been grateful for and have encouraged others to move on to better jobs, and I think that is a critical role that department heads can play. I don't think we should be holding good people back. So, that's a good thing. Any questions for Mr. Maloney?
Just out of curiosity, how many senior public health inspectors do we have?
We have three. And we have one public health sanitarium.
Okay. I'll move that we authorize the filling of the senior health, public health inspector position in the health department. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we have a position in the planning department, the zoning coordinator.
I'm covering for Allison Steinfeld tonight. So, the planning department has a vacancy in the zoning coordinator position. This position provides support to the ZBA as well as the building, planning, and town departments.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Goff, filling in for Ms. Steinfeld?
Did we lose Mackenzie Lee to another town?
I'm not sure where she went. I don't think it was a good fit, so...
Okay. I'll move that we authorize filling the zoning coordinator in the planning department. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
I'm an equal opportunity screw-up of names. And, okay, moving on, we have Ms. Stone interviewing for the Commission for Women. Welcome. So, tell us about your interest in the commission.
Well, I think, as most of you know, from hearing, along with the public, my background in human rights and reproductive rights and professional work, especially in reproductive rights, and the work that I've been doing in the last many years on gender equity and trying to increase the attention to, especially to women's voice, and how we capture that voice, how that voice is expressed, particularly in the public sphere. That started in Brookline with me, with community voice, when I first ran for town meeting, and continued through the work on the school committee. And then, but because of the real intersection of my professional life and my community life and community service has been around women's rights and women and girls, and we'll talk about that later, because of the warrant article. But really, as I was getting more involved, talking to students over the last year about the warrant article that we will talk about later, I was paying more and more attention to the Women's Commission, and actually went and looked at the Enabling Bylaw and found that the bylaw actually suggests a much larger potential role for the Women's Commission than I think it has played, although I have huge respect for the wonderful community events and the work that the Women's Commission has done. But I think that as we enter into a new phase of feminism in the country, in the world, that that commission is one that has a lot of untapped potential in terms of what it can do within Brookline. I'd really like to be a part of building that.
Any questions?
So, the obvious question, Rebecca, what other things can the Women's Commission do that you think it should be doing to expand its reach and scope?
Well, the Enabling Bylaw talks about sponsoring, advising, and supporting work across Brookline government and civic life, which means that when I was on the school committee, as you all... all know, the school committee and the select board both have assigned liaisons to countless boards and commissions. I see no reason why the Women's Commission shouldn't also be assigning liaisons and being much more actively present at the rest of civic, you know, what's going on in our civic life, and being a voice at the table. I don't know, I would like to learn more about the intersection of the Women's Commission with the Diversity Inclusion Commission, how that gets, how that gets acted out. As I said, when we started working on this warrant article, it occurred to me that this was a natural kind of thing in terms of engaging the community in a discussion of what women and equity looked like, gender equity looked like in Brookline, that it would be a natural for the Women's Commission to be sponsoring warrant articles like that, there's no reason why it shouldn't be generating that. So it's things, it's things like that that I see as very possible.
So, it's great to see you back, and know that you're going to be as active as you can be in this community. And I'm wondering whether, you know, some of the issues you're describing seem to delve more into the political realm, and I'm wondering whether you see that as a role of the commission in terms of issues for women, things like concerning themselves with things like wage discrepancy, is there a wage discrepancy in Brookline? Are there other issues that are exhibiting some form of, I'll use discrimination for lack of a better word, but do you see any of those things being roles of the commission?
Well, I don't see the commission as having, the bylaw certainly does not empower the commission to investigate, but I think that any commission is better off with as much data as it can operate on, and so in terms of looking into things and having an active inquiry into questions like you just raised, I think those are terrific questions for something like, for a place like the commission and the commissioners to engage with, and if they find things to bring them to light, which is, again, what the bylaw says the purpose of the commission is, I think that, that public education piece is essential if the commission is going to have an ongoing and more active role in the polity, and as we all know, women's issues and gender equity are very political issues, and we should be getting at them.
Let me ask you another question regarding the Women's Commission, is you see it, you know, from the outside, do you think that an issue that's in the town, that's a very important issue, and that is the extent to which commissions, boards, et cetera, reflect some, a level of diversity, not necessarily the diversity of the town, but, you know, diversity that gives them, you know, different perspectives, experiences, sensitivities to address issues that would be relevant to everyone. Do you think the Women's Commission has done enough outreach to, you know, minority communities in Brookline to the extent that, for example, I went to this great program last Thursday, Women Who Inspire Me, it was an incredible program.
It was wonderful. I stood right next to you.
I know. One thing I sort of noticed, maybe I'm just sensitive to this, is that the participate, there wasn't significant, if any, participation by black families. I wonder if that's an issue of outreach, or if that's just something that happened this year that hasn't happened in the past, I don't recall. But I mean, that's, that's an area where, you know, I think maybe there's some, maybe there's a need to be a nut, there's a need for a nudge to do a little more outreach.
Well, I certainly would urge the select board in its consideration of appointments to boards and commissions, in this case to look.
You're the only one before us right now.
To look, exactly, and I cannot pretend to answer the problem of diversity that you just raised, but, but I think the, I think the, certainly the board has, the commission has had pretty good diversity in terms of its, its membership over the years, that can always be improved, I think. I don't know what the, what the norm is, certainly for our elected boards, it is frequently frowned upon by the public if the members, the sitting members of the board actively recruit people to come onto the board in elected positions, that's not always welcomed by the, by the public. For our other boards and commissions, where we're really looking for people who are looking for a way to serve, I think we can all be more active in recruiting, in recruiting folks who want to get involved, and encouraging people that this is a way, short of town meeting and that commitment, short of a lot of other things, you know, to look at those boards and commissions and to, and to think about stepping up, but I think, I think that's on all of us, not just the, the people who are serving on commissions, but, but everybody who has an active interest in seeing that diversity more robustly displayed across all of the boards.
Any other questions?
What's the biggest change you've seen in Brookline since you've moved here?
In terms of women?
Anything.
The biggest change I've seen in Brookline?
Housing values.
I was going to say, I think the disappearance of Brookline's middle class is the biggest change that I've seen in 20 years.
Yeah.
And it's a big problem.
Yeah. As am I. Okay, so I guess in the next couple of weeks, we'll make appointments.
Thank you for your consideration. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And I'll talk to you later.
Okay. Okay, we have some departmental budgets to consider.
Bond sale.
Oh, we have bond sale, oh gosh. It's, the bond sale is actually, this one is actually really good news, but I say good gosh, because whenever we have a bond sale, it means we're here till midnight signing stuff.
My apologies in advance of the signing party that's about to begin.
There's a top sheet now, right?
No. Wait till you see it.
A big stack.
So we're about to authorize the issuance of $52,800,000 in, in bonds, so Ms. Franconi, why don't you tell us about it?
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that the town has retained its AAA bond rating from Moody's, which allows us to receive a more favorable interest rate to the bonds that Chair Wyszynski was just speaking about. So we did sell the 52.8 million bonds on March 19th, and we received 10 bids, and the lowest bidder was Fidelity Capital Markets with a true interest cost of 2.97%, which is fantastic, I do say so myself, it surprised me. We also received a premium of approximately $3.7 million, and that premium will go to offset the cost of issuance, as well as it will subtract a portion of the actual amount of the, the bond offering. Inside the bond issue, we issued 35.9 million for the high school expansion, 10.7 for Coolidge Corner School, 2.7 for Lars Anderson Park, 2.1 for Harry Downs Field and the Kraft Family Athletic Center, 1 million for wastewater improvements, 300,000 for water system improvements, 100,000 for the Carlton Street Footbridge, and $75,000 for HVAC improvements at the golf course. In addition to the bonds, we also issued 4.7 in bands, bond anticipation notes, and we received seven bids, and the lowest bidder was TD Securities with a net interest cost of 1.72% and a premium of almost $60,000. The ban was to finance the land acquisition of the three properties on Oak Street.
Wow, 1.72%.
Yeah. Really.
What's the term, what, two years, one year?
The ban is a one-year term.
One year.
Yeah.
That's why it's so low.
Oh.
And it's interest only.
Right.
But that we refine it until we're ready for permanent financing.
What does premium, like the concept of a premium?
So we sold the bonds for higher than their par value, so if we sold them at 4 million, 4.7, we actually received an additional 60,000 because of the low interest rate market that we're in, so our bonds are selling at a higher rate than their actual value.
So the coupon rate is higher than 3%, so they pass a little money up front to bring the, the true cost down.
Okay.
Just, it's an accounting device.
Interesting.
Well, and I'm sure that one of the reasons we get this is this, this excellent rate is because we are a AAA community, and the bond issuers and the rating agencies know that we pay our bills, and we engage in capital projects that we can pay for either through overrides or debt exclusions or our CIP, so we have an excellent track record for that.
That is correct, yep, it is because we are a AAA bond-rated community. Moody's, they highlighted some of our strong management and fiscal policies and practices that we use, but they did caution us about the large capital projects that are about to come online. They also mentioned our pension and OPEB liabilities and the limitations with Prop Two and a Half, so all of those could be a challenge, and just to, as we navigate these waters, you're right, with debt exclusions and how we fund some of these projects will be critical with our rating.
I just want to highlight, you know, for the, for the borrowing for the high school expansion, this round, it's 35.8 million, we had said last year that we, the town always estimates fairly conservatively, so we said, well, if we got bonds at 5%, it would cost this, but in fact, we're getting a bond at 2.9%, so we're saving about 40% of the cost, really, right?
Of the interest cost.
Of the interest cost, of what we anticipated would be the interest, what we told people.
That's right.
So it's actually going to be cheaper, at least for this round, and the same goes for the devotion, I think we use the same 5% figure when we forecast what the devotion school would cost, but in fact, I believe all of the bonds for that school, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe all the bonds for that school have come in less than 5%.
They have, yep, it's been around three.
Been around three.
Yes.
So in fact, that's something else in our favor.
Select person Green.
Yeah, a few things, I want to be clear that when you said that the rating agency cautioned us about our capital projects, that they were not saying that they see that as a big warning sign, but rather they're, like rating agencies do, they're identifying things we have to be careful about going forward, and I think that, you know, the audience should know that the caution is telling us to maintain our good management practices, our good procedures, and our, you know, conservative budgeting in order to be able to absorb this new capital funding, or capital expenditures going into the future. I mean, it's, I don't want people to think that the rating agencies are saying, watch out.
Oh, no, I, yes, I apologize, that's how I came across.
It's just the way it comes out, you know, from the rating agency report, and it's important to, I think, add some context to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, in looking at the credit opinion from Moody's, you know, they cite explicitly, in terms of strengths, our sizable tax base, we have the, what, fourth highest assessed value of property in the state, with very strong resident wealth and incomes, as select person Green said, our conservative fiscal policies and planning, long-term trend of stable financial operations, and then taxpayer support for overrides. In the challenges side, they cite the, the growing capital needs driven by the upward trending school enrollment, and of course, limited flexibility under Prop Two and a Half, but until this time, you know, all, all of the capital projects, all the big capital projects that we've been, that we've, are issuing the bonds for today are subject to debt exclusions, where the voters have said, yes, we're willing to tax ourselves a little extra to pay for these, and that's very important, and the credit agencies see that, and that's a good sign for the credit agencies.
Well, I'm not sure I understood that last comment, because the first two were certainly were debt exclusions, the high school expansion and devotion, I don't recall Lars Anderson.
I said the big ones.
The big ones, okay. Ah, qualifier.
Right, see, I was sneaky.
Yeah, Mary, okay, yeah, that's certainly correct, I mean, we, the others we finance out of our regular.
I chose my words carefully, especially when, when talking about bonding, I choose my words very carefully.
Let me just add a couple more things, just, you know, we got these documents ahead of the signing, and I thank you for that, okay? It used to be that we would get our doc, the bond documents on Friday, and we're supposed to sign them on Tuesday, unacceptable, so you've improved considerably, and I, I thank you for that. I think, though, that we still need to develop some, you know, procedure, procedures, you know, I guess procedures for getting information to the board early enough for us to review, figure out what questions we have, and have those questions answered before the bonds are sold. So I'd like to work with you in terms of developing a schedule like that.
Sure.
Because although, there's no reason why we shouldn't, you know, trust, you know, town staff to, you know, do everything right, it's just good practice to make sure that especially non-professional, bond profession-type people, whatever that, stupid construction, I'm sorry, but, you know, people who are not knowledgeable about the intricacies of issuing bonds have an opportunity to learn what they need to learn to make a, you know, competent decision in terms of approval or not. The other thing I want to sort of highlight, and thank you again, or a shout-out to, you know, the good work you're doing, is for the first time, and this is kind of bad, but for the first time, we have in, in the tax certificate, a post-issuance.
Yes.
Post-bond issuance procedures, written procedures, and that's something the IRS for years has been telling issuers they have to have, and having gone through some, some tax audits in my, you know, previous job, it's no fun unless you have the procedures the IRS wants in a written form that they can look at, and that you can show to them how you actually implemented the steps in those procedures to ensure that you're complying with the tax regulations. So I think that's a very important step forward that you've taken, and, you know, again, a shout-out to you for that.
Thank you.
Bernard, why do we have to learn this when we have you?
No.
Because you're so knowledgeable.
I'm retired, I'm quickly forgetting everything I knew. But, by the way, and the importance of that actually is related to our issuance of the band, because, you know, there we're using tax-exempt bond proceeds to purchase property that's being used by private individuals.
Yes.
So, you know, I assume that, you know, procedures go through, you know, the checklist of things that have to be done to ensure that that's not going to create a problem with the IRS.
That's correct, and so.
That's a very concrete example of why what you've done is very important.
Thank you.
I want to make two quick points. First, compliments to the town's financial leaders, the full-time staff that helps this board and other boards and commissions run the town and mind the, mind the budget. I think not only is AAA bond rating, but such a low interest rate affirmation and positive feedback on the work that, that we're all doing together. I want to highlight two things that I took away particularly from the ratings report. First, the, in addition to the sort of pluses that have been mentioned thus far, explicitly in the, the credit considerations. in the credit considerations is specific reference to the town's proximity to Boston, particularly public transportation, and though unstated, the LMA and the educational community, both of whom have members of the largest taxpayers in Brookline. And second, just to go one step further, I think not only is it stated here that we budget conservatively, and we've got some stated policies, conservative policies, but the fact that we go back and revisit those policies periodically, and we've got an effort underway right now to do that, the Fiscal Advisory Committee. And I think it's that second point that really is most important to me as we sort of continue this prolonged favorable economic conditions, this environment of low interest rates, which at some point will come to an end. And I am confident that we are well-positioned to weather a downturn and continue to do capital projects, as we have over the past few years, with minimal impact. And, again, I think this is a good day. Clearly, we've got a low interest rate, but I think it's also an affirmation of the work we've done and put some wind in our sails to keep doing it over the next couple of years.
Anything else? Okay, so, there's this long vote, which I'm not going to read the entire vote, else we'd be here for the next 10 minutes, but I will refer to the pages in our packet, which is in Section 12A, and it's labeled at the bottom pages 288 and 289. And that is the full text of the vote, but just to summarize it, that this is a vote that authorizes the sale of these bonds, and it's 49, 49,465,000 general obligation municipal purpose of 2019 bonds for the price of $53,1,537.38. That's, the difference is the bond premium. And then, there's a coupon rate which ranges from five, starting at 5% down to 3.375%. And the bond premium, even though we're paying the coupon rate, that's between 5 and 3.375, that bond premium brings the true cost of the bond issuance down. The vote further approves the sale of 4.7, 4,700,000, $3% general obligation bond anticipation notes with a premium of $59,831, and also authorizes the preparation distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated March 13th and a final official statement dated March 19th. And it also approves, in connection with the marking sale of notes, preparation distributions of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated March 13th and a final official statement dated March 19th. And it also approves that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town and that the town treasurer and the select board are hereby authorized to actually execute the bonds and the significant events disclosure in compliance with SEC rules. And it also authorizes the town treasurer to review and update the town's post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in consultation with bond counsel and that each member of the select board and town clerk and town treasurer are authorized to take any and all actions to execute and deliver these certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined. The vote is held in an open, a meeting open to the public, it's been duly noticed, it's on television, the world can see it, streamed on the internet. And so, that's, and then the exact language of the vote is, as I said, referenced on page 288 and 289 of our packet. Okay, all those in favor of that vote, for all this money, this is our legacy.
Your legacy.
Right. Select, say, please say aye. Select person.
Franco.
Aye.
Select person.
Aye.
Select person green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. See, I'm an equal opportunity.
Make it its way around. The roster of here.
You're already forgetting about this whole experience, Neil.
Yeah, really.
I don't know if I have more.
Yeah, right. Okay, so, we've issued 50-something million dollars in bonds, so let's move on to more mundane matters like running the finance department. Ms. Franconi.
Thank you. With me tonight is the comptroller, Mike DePietro, and the chief assessor, Gary McCabe, there in the audience, and I am sure they will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm sure they will be.
For them. The finance department's budget is increasing by $60,000, and 10,000 of that is just in personnel steps and increases there. The bulk of the increase is for software maintenance, $22,800, and this covers both the accounting software and the tax and utility receivable software in the treasurer's office. There's also an increase of $5,000 in credit card costs, and this is driven by the pay-by-sell, those transactions for parking. And so, the team and I, we're going to take a look at that. We may have to come back and ask if we can increase the convenience fee. We're right now at 30 cents, and that's not really covering the entire cost as this type of parking, everybody's got their cellphone out, and it's really convenient. So, we probably will have to come back and raise that fee.
Although Newton's convenience fee is like half, how do they make it work?
They're eating it.
Yeah, they're not passing it on.
Same with Boston.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Cambridge is charging 50 cents, I can tell you that. So, yeah, more to come as we kind of research this, but the, we have seen just an increase of over, we're like 100% over where we were last year, just by the pay-by-sell parking alone. So, it's kind of fascinating to watch how people park, where the popular places to park are. It's.
Does that give us good data on where people are parking?
Yes.
Though I think, because you put in the meter number or the space number, so.
Yeah, I can tell which meters are the most popular.
I like round numbers so that I remember what the number was.
Okay, so, that's that. We had already talked about purchasing, there's a pool car for 19,000 in their budget, but those are the only increases to the finance department's budget. But if I could just highlight a couple of things that are going on in treasury, we recently added a couple of new ways that people can pay their bills. So, you can pay by phone, we have an 800 number, so you can pay, just like your utilities, you've been able to do that for a while. We also now have joined the club, so we have an 800 number, and you can pay your taxes or refuse in water bills that way, and you can also pay by text.
Pay by text?
Yeah.
How does that work?
So, it's an app through Invoice Cloud, and so, if you sign up online, you can also sign up and use your phone to do that, too.
So, it's like an Apple Pay or app like that?
Right, yeah, but the convenience fees still do apply, so if you do call the 800 number or you pay by text, you'll still receive that convenience fee if you use your credit card mainly and the 40 cents for an EFT. I also wanted to highlight that we have started collecting donations for the elderly and disabled taxation fund, and we have collected almost $6,200 to date. And Gary and I, we sit on the committee and will be meeting on April 9th to go through the applications that we have received. The due date for the application is April 1st, so anybody who is looking for a little more assistance, they are welcome to apply. We'll be doing this on a rolling basis, but we thought it would be good to put a deadline on the form, so we will see what comes of that. Also, in our deferred program, our deferred tax program, we had changed the rate last year from 5%. It's down to 2.33% right now. I can report that we don't have any new deferrals, but the FY '20 rate will be 2.91%, and that's what, it's tied to the 10-year treasury.
So, looking at the performance indicators, is this right? We're still getting 84% roughly of the payments coming into the town as checks?
Yes, it is the most popular way people pay their bills. We use a, the bank has a lockbox system, so the P.O. box that people are sending their checks to go directly to the bank, and they have this fancy check reader, but, yeah, 80% pay-by-check.
Wow. And only 3.2, 3.25% is credit cards?
Yeah, and I anticipate that's going to go down. People really don't like that convenience fee, I'm watching, and I'm curious to see if we'll have more telephone transactions, but it's only been up for about two months, so I'm curious if, what that'll look like.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of the telephone thing, so the publicity hasn't been out there.
Okay, I'll have to, I'll work on that. It definitely is on the finance page, webpage, the treasurer's webpage, and it's also on the, when you go to pay online, it's also there, too. So, I've tried to put it in about four or five spots.
You probably want to put it on the bill itself.
Yeah, I, I'll have to check if I've done that for the fourth quarter.
And then, I see, we're still issuing payroll checks?
We do.
Okay.
There's, there is no, the town does not say that we only issue direct deposit. It's highly encouraged, and we always, when people fill out their new employee forms, we always have that direct deposit slip in there, but it's not required.
Yeah, boy, I'll tell you, all the, I'll tell you, the last 20 years when I've been working, it's been required in other locales, so, but I know it's a collective bargaining issue. Yeah.
So, I'm just curious, we talked about the convenience fees for MasterCard, but we're still getting 80% checks. Now, I'm wondering whether there is a fee for electronic checks, and I did it for the first time myself this last go-round, and I thought it was actually very convenient, and I realized that you're paying 40 cents for the convenience, but it also costs at least that for a stamp.
That's right.
Well, it's more than that, it's 50 cents for a stamp.
50 cents for a stamp, so it's, you know, although I'm in town hall a lot, so I can just drop it off. But, the point is, is that for most people, it really, it is a bargain, it's a time saver, but I'm wondering how, whether it's a time saver for the town as well in terms of your department, and whether it's easier to manage an electronic check than it is a paper check?
It is, it is more efficient. It's an electronic upload of all of the transactions that come through that way, so it's really easy to import those into the system. It's faster than actually doing a hand batch of checks for clerks.
Okay, so, we should be encouraging that, if people are complaining about the convenience fee, we should point out to them.
Yeah, we always do, we always tell them what all of their options are, and especially if they're on the fence, we always calculate that convenience fee before we, before we process their transaction to say, "Okay, the convenience fee if you do buy credit card will be this versus 40 cents with a check."
Which is equivalent with, or less than a stamp.
That's right.
Right. Have we seen parking meter receipts going up in aggregate due to the, how easy it is to pay by cell? Has it been, has it been a moneymaker for us? I'm looking at Ms. Goff, which is probably more in, more in her realm. I know that parking tickets are down because it's easier to comply.
Yes, we've been reducing the revenue estimate for parking fines over the past couple of years. Meters has not been a windfall. I think we're meeting our revenue estimate, and that's pretty much kind of where we thought it was going to be around 5.1, 5.2 million dollars.
Okay, so, it's a net loser, but people are happier because they're not getting hit with tickets.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's good. It's more convenient, so it's better, it's good government. Anything else?
So, I've got a question, which I think might be for Mr. McCabe, but I will pose it to the chair, and he can figure out who to.
Well, Mr. McCabe, this is for you.
And I think it probably has a little bit that Mr. Stokes may want to respond to later in the evening when he's in the hot seat. But, Mr. McCabe, I've, I've been in, in increasing number of conversations where people are using the assessor's database to get to the bottom of some data question they have, and I'm wondering how those interactions impact your daily schedule and your staff's daily schedule. Is it something that you're spending a lot of time helping people with, or are people just getting a hold of the information and not calling on you to help interpret it?
Well, thank you for asking that question. We are, we're spending some additional time responding to requests for access to our data, even though it may be available through the website, it's navigating that process. We're willing to do that, it's the town's data, it's available to anyone that's interested. There are some reservations that I've cautioned users about, and I'll tell you what that is. Our data was collected for the purposes of property tax, right, to assign a value to each property and then base a tax on that. So, looking at our data, you may find it helpful, but it may be more helpful if it was manipulated in some way that we don't do. So, that's the cautionary note. The data was created for our purposes, not your purposes, so translating that is why we spend some time. We explain that, this is the data as of January 1st, 2018, for example. It's not real time. If there's a new house across the street from someone who's interested in data, and they go to our database and that house is not in our database, it's because it wasn't there on January 1st, 2018. That's an example. So, some of the time we spend is just explaining why it's not exactly what you were hoping it would be. So, thank you for that. It's useful data, but it's not real-time data, is my summary.
I find the assessor's database one of the most useful data sets. I'm actually, I query that database a lot. The curiosity gets to me. Anything else? Mr. DePietro gets off easy. Thank you. Next up is the library. So, what's happening at the library?
Hi, good evening, Sarah Sloman, library director. So, this year, I think the most important part of our budget story is that we have taken some time to work carefully with Kevin Stokes, the CIO, and Dave Janikakis, our head procurement officer, to repair some missing pieces to our technology functionality. So, while we were very proud to be the first library in the state of Massachusetts to add RFID technology, we did not build any budgeting into that process for repair, refreshment, or replacement of materials. So, we also didn't have any sort of subsistence budgets outside of our regular leasing, so frequently, the library was the beneficiary of hand-me-down technology from the IT department, but there was no budgeting for, for example, library stables such as barcode readers and receipt printers that are unique to our environment. So, this year, we did work really hard with Melissa as well to figure out what that would look like, and that is what you're going to see the majority of our expansion requests reflecting. We're starting to slowly build the RFID replacement cycle in, so you'll see the first batch of that this year, and then some smaller pieces as we move forward. But this should cover. some smaller pieces as we move forward. But this should cover our, our day-to-day needs to replace things like monitors, ethernet cables, barcode readers, things like that, as well as an ongoing recycle, refreshment cycle for maintenance of all of said items. So that is the most, I think, important, expensive, and compelling piece of our budget increases this year. And you'll also see there's a small piece where we're hoping, thanks to Melissa's patience and dedication, to finally right-size the personnel budget at the library. We saw extreme attrition of volunteer workforce in the last five years. Volunteers were being used to conduct work that was not really ethically allowable as far as having access to patron records, and so those folks, when, often when reassigned to other duties, chose not to volunteer at the library anymore. That came to, we figure roughly, at least three FTEs worth of work, so the work didn't go away. And also, the addition several years ago of part-time paid sick leave was an unfunded mandate, so that we've been sort of eating that every year, but we've moved some money around. Melissa's been very helpful and creative. And so we're hoping to see this help me and then Justin and Melissa also not worry so much about making sure we make our number every year.
You had a big vent reopening Coolidge Corner. That was exciting.
We did, we did. We had 1,100 guests that day.
Wow.
We were very pleased. We've had overwhelming praise and support for the projects. Thank you all for your part in supporting that, and for those of you that were able to attend. People really love it.
I notice there's a number of library trustees here-
Oh, yes, sorry.
-in support.
Thank you all for coming out. Gary Jones, Chris Chaney-Silket, Michael Burstein, John Margolis, Carol Lowey, Reggie Healy, and Karen Livingston.
Okay.
Can you just fill us in on what this Makerspace that you're going to-
Yeah.
...develop and launch in the upcoming fiscal year is?
Yeah, we're very excited about that as a project. We're using sort of a very creative funding model. We're using some existing private funding that we had in place for tech, a little bit of like innovative technology. And then Callan Bignoli, our Assistant Director for Technology, has also applied for an LSTA grant, and she successfully petitioned the foundation, I believe she was here last week, to accept the gift of $25,000 to fund the idea space. So Makerspaces have been a big thing in libraries for probably close to 15 years now. We have offered some maker programming. We've had a 3D printer for, since I came. We got it the year I came. And we're just expanding on it. We're giving it its own home, so we're going to have a newer technology. As you know, it's not like old refrigerators that we'd have the same one the whole time we grew up, and then our mom would have it for her whole life. Right now, it's like four years, if you're lucky, maybe five at a stretch. So our, our 3D printer is still functioning, but we're going to upgrade that. We're going to add 3D printers at the other two locations where they don't have them. We are also going to be adding a laser cutter. We're going to add a vacuum former, so that's actually the coolest thing. So you, so Callan made something the other day where she put a seashell into it, and it creates the mold for the seashell, and then you can fill the mold with chocolate, or soap, or, yeah, you can make it out of metal, or plastic, or rubber. You could, it's very, very cool, sort of next level 3D printing. But in a funny way, it's retro because it was kind of a novelty technology from the late 50s or early 60s that's sort of been revitalized and made more versatile. I think one of the most important signature items in this program is that we're going to purchase 12 desktop 3D printers. So we'll be the first library in Massachusetts that's offering 3D printing classes to the public, like hands-on 3D printing. So we'll set up the computer lab. You sign up for the class. You come once a week for a couple of weeks, and you sit with your actual own 3D printer, and you'll be taught how to use the program, and you'll be able to design and execute things that you want to print. So it's going to be really cool. So before-
Sign me up.
Yeah, right? I know. It's really, really cool.
I'm out of time.
When you're truly retired.
Yeah.
We also are offering, when Makerspaces first came out, they were very forward-looking technology-wise. In other jobs I've had, we've also incorporated things like carpentry, and sewing, and knitting, so we're going to be doing that here as well. We'll be adding sewing machines and sewing classes, so you can check a sewing machine out and take it home. You can also take a sewing class. Tonight, we actually had the launch party for a new strategic, from the trustee's strategic plan. It's called Borrow an Expert, and so you can check out a person that works at the library if you have a topic that you're interested in learning more about. One of those topics is sewing. I think we also are offering knitting and crochet. So there's, there's all kinds of crazy forward, neato technologies that make people say, wow, but there's also traditional making skills being taught to the public in a time when you don't see that anymore. I had to take home ec in high school. They don't do that anymore. So nobody knows how to fix a hem, or sew a button on, or balance a checkbook. Huh?
Or make a pancake.
Right, balance a checkbook, all that stuff. They just don't teach that anymore, so we're going to do it.
I took home ec in high school also.
Yeah, I love it.
Matter of fact, in Philadelphia, the girls took woodwork, metal shop, and leather shop sewing. The boys took cooking, sewing, and one other shop.
Very progressive. Pretty progressive thinking, yeah.
Back another century. Anyway. A couple of questions.
Sure.
Tell me about the Borrow an Expert program. That sounds interesting. I hope it is. And also, what is R-O-K-U?
Oh, a Roku.
Roku.
Yeah. So a Roku, boy, I wish I brought Callan, but she's down with the flu. So Roku-
Maybe I should have asked my son, who's-
Yeah, I think so, Bernard.
I have a Roku actually.
So, so the thing that prompted us to get Rokus is, for any of you who still buy DVDs, when you open the DVD, now there's a code inside, and you get a digital copy too. So we paid for those with tax dollars, so we were sort of at a loss for what to do with them. So we, we don't have the licensing to just load them on the public computers for anyone and everyone to watch, because that's public performance, and that's not the terms that we bought the DVD under, right? So we kept stacking them up, and stacking them up, and stacking them up. And Roy McKenzie, our reference supervisor, came and said, I have an idea. We're going to buy Rokus, and we're going to separate all of these out by genre, and we're going to have like a Disney Roku, and we're going to have a rom-com Roku, and we're going to have a westerns Roku, and a thrillers, and a sci-fi. So you can upload all of these digital movies onto them. And then they also function as a streaming device for other programming when you take them home and hook them up to your TV. So it's really cool, yeah. We like the Rokus. And what was your first question?
You should get one, Bernard. They're not expensive.
No.
Borrow an expert. That sounds interesting.
Yeah, so Borrow an Expert, we formed a committee at the library, and staff who have special skillsets came forward to volunteer. And so during work hours, obviously, they will offer appointments. So if you, for interest, for example, are interested in learning more about manga fandom, or Harry Potter fandom, we have people who are really, really into that, who go to conferences about it, and have, you know, lots of connections. So you can go and learn from them. So we also have, we don't really do much technology with the Borrow an Expert because we, we have such rich programming in that department already, and so much more now coming online. But there's a whole variety, like, I think I mentioned, crocheting. So if you've always wanted to learn to crochet, but maybe not badly enough to pay for a class at Brookline Adult Dad, or at a community college, you know, you could come in and try it out with our expert a couple of times and see if you can pick it up. So there's all different, I think they, I think, they came to me with 36-ish things, and I, no, let's get it down to 12 for the first year and see how it goes. So there, again, the launch party was tonight, and it is available on our website, the full array of items that you can borrow a staff member for an hour or two to learn about.
So my final question is, we have a 3D printer. I assume that there's no fee for using that. Is that correct?
That is incorrect.
That's incorrect, okay.
The 3D printer is one of the only things that we do actually charge for materials. So we don't obviously charge for our time. We don't charge for the wear and tear on the machine, but the filament is still very expensive. We do have a pretty well-thought-out policy around it. You're not allowed to order something that costs more than $75, I think. I don't know the policy intricately, but-
My question really was more 3D printers and other technologies, which looks to me like could be used by people to develop commercial ventures, which I think is good.
Yeah.
Is that something that you see a lot of?
So we haven't seen a ton of that in Brookline, but there are, one of the famous cases that librarians have used across the country to make the case for funding for the 3D printing and for Makerspaces is, there was a man whose children, whose son, lost his hands in an accident, and they simply couldn't afford to continue to replace the prosthetics as their son grew. And he went to his library and 3D printed new prosthetic hands for his son every time he outgrew a pair. So there certainly is, there are medical applications, and there are household applications. We just had someone in who manufactured a table leg for an antique table that had been in his family for a long time, and during a move, the leg was smashed beyond repair, and he made one, it was a fair semblance, perfect shape, fair semblance of color, on our 3D printer. So there's a lot of different ways you can do it. I haven't seen anyone prototyping, you know, the next moon rover or anything, but you never know. You never know. And we do hope to start offering in the future more technology for entrepreneurs to offer teleconferencing and business meeting sort of facilities, which we're not able to really do right now.
Select person Franco, and then I think we have to move on.
I will be brief, I promise. First, I want to say thank you for, for you and your leadership team participating in the GEAR program. I don't want to let that opportunity pass. I think it's, it's something that, speaking just for myself, I want to see further adopted. So thank you for being one of the first departments.
Yeah, you're welcome. Surely. We've definitely really enjoyed it. We do try to augment it with our own programming. We recently, all 97 of us, completed a three-hour homelessness training, so how to interact with patrons who are experiencing homelessness. So we work, we're working really hard to get it all together over there, so we're making sure we're providing equal, inclusive, excellent service to everyone that needs us.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
My, my final question is, select person Heller and I spent a lot of time with you about a year ago talking about the supervisor of public operations position.
Oh, yeah.
I'm wondering how that's, that's working out for you.
Thank you for asking. I probably should have mentioned it myself. So we hired, finally, Brent Blair, who was the Deputy Superintendent for Facilities Management for the City of Framingham. He came highly recommended, and he starts on Monday. We're very excited.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'm very excited. He has a very, very, very busy week, so if you're watching, Brent, get your rest in Florida. I have him booked solid for five days, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, library trustees. And up last with the budgets is Mr. Stokes. I think we're running about 20 minutes late. Oh, so for that, I'll apologize. And I'll just say, you know, looking at the calendar, I knew this one was going to be a challenge to keep us relatively on time. So the fact that we're only running 20 minutes late or so, I guess isn't too bad. Mr. Stokes, what's going on in IT?
Good evening. Kevin Stokes, Chief Information Officer, and I too took sewing and typing in high school, and that has served me well in life, so I appreciate of that. I know you're, you're a little truster time tonight, so I'll certainly try to be brave. In terms of the budget, hopefully it's fairly straightforward. The overall budget for IT for FY '20 is $2,032,347, and that's an increase of $4,005 over last year. It's specifically due to step increases. So there's really no incremental increase in any parts of the budget other than just step increases. With that said, I'll open it up for questions. If there's anything specific that I can elaborate on, just to be mindful of your time.
So what are the trends in IT that you're seeing?
The trends continue to be, quite frankly, is move towards operating pressure away from capital. So this will be another year where we're light on capital requests. It doesn't mean that we don't have needs for technology refresh, but what you're seeing is much more inertia towards licensing models, and software as a service, and cloud-based services, which sort of eliminates the need to buy physical things and, you know, continue to invest capital dollars. So we've been managing it, you know, so far so good on that, and, you know, certainly kudos to our friends in purchasing who are very helpful in terms of how we get some, you know, long-term strategic contracts that lock us in for some favorable pricing. And that's ultimately reflects in the budget, how we're able to sort of hold the line and some of our operating growth there. So hopefully that will continue as we, as we progress forward.
Probably the, the biggest complaint I hear from constituents is about our website, and how sometimes it's hard to find stuff. What can we do to, to improve that?
It's, it's quite frankly, it's a never-ending task. And, you know, there is no such thing as a website redesign. It's an evolution, and, you know, it's, from our perspective, I was just actually talking to some residents on Friday about that. There isn't a group or a subset of folks that are the subject matter experts. It's constant input in terms of, you know, what can we do to make it better, and how can we make the navigation easier, et cetera. You know, quite honestly, the challenge is really twofold. It, the website is predominantly an e-commerce site. A lot of what folks are there to do is, it's an intention. They want to buy something, pay for something, or perform a transaction. So you really try to make those, you know, those intentions, as they're called, quite prominent and quite easy to find. On top of that, we have, you know, thousands of documents that are very important, historical and legacy documents. So we try to make the navigation, you know, sort of work multiple ways in terms of how somebody's brain might work, whether it's alphabetically, or what's called by an intention, or I want to, you know, do something like that. So you try to sort of find a common way that somebody might want to try to find something or figure out something. It's a challenge, you know, along with search engines, as you know, is, that's the, the number one gripe, is when you search for something, it's very difficult to come up with the appropriate results. We, we're always talking about the website, all day, every day, and I don't think that will change.
I, I agree. I hear a lot of complaints about the website also. Isn't one simple fix to alphabetize everything?
Well, we've done that, I think, on all the top-line menus, as you see. So what we, I guess how we refer to the website-
Go to the departments.
Yeah.
And they're not always alphabetized.
They should be. I will definitely check on that. They should be alphabetized, but typically across what we call the top banner, that's traditional government organized by hierarchy, whereas along the side, it's more often transaction-based, I want to do something, or I want to look in for this types of information.
So I'll chime in on the website, the topic du jour, I guess. I actually want to compliment you. I know that you came before the Commission for the Disabled a couple of days ago to highlight a issue with the website, and particularly some of the stuff that's on it now, the documents that are on it, and accessibility. So thank you for embracing that, and, and taking what I think are positive steps to try and make sure that documents going forward, and also legacy documents, are brought into a form that everybody can, can access in one way, shape, or form.
Yeah, thank you for-
I do want to ask you about the National Citizen Survey, and whether you've had an opportunity to take a look at, I think, the three years of data that we have now, and pull out some trends, and maybe highlight for us where you think we're going, and some areas of attention over the next year to two years.
What we tried to do is encourage the departments as part of this budget process to really look at the data. There's a couple of top-line things that, you know, I think we need to be mindful of. Typically, the residents are still not pleased with the amount of affordable housing and parking options available in the town, and that's certainly a legacy. What I thought was interesting, you know, in this last go-around, and I did raise this with the emergency management team, is the amount of folks that have prepared for an emergency, stockpiled supplies, and done some things like that, has actually decreased fairly significantly, I think, you know, over the last six years. So that was probably the number one thing that resonated with me. There's a lot of data in there, so every department, I think, can glean a couple of interesting things to look at and, and deal with it, you know, specifically on that level. But in terms of top-line stuff, it's, it's pretty consistent over the three that we've done around affordable housing and parking as being the, you know, the two primary concerns voiced by the public.
Yeah, yeah. Let me just ask you a question of feasibility, of something. We get board packets, you know, pretty thick, you know, piles of paper every week. Is there, what's my question? Do you see it as being feasible to have the board receive their materials electronically on, let's say, an iPad or something? And what, what would be the issues or the problems with, you know, begin with that approach to distribution of board materials?
If you set aside the money aspect, it would cost something, obviously. It's not a technology issue. I think the retirement board does that. They actually have iPads, and they can actually, in a fairly secure way, distribute documents that can't be shared, that can't be printed, that can't be forwarded, and they have, you know, I think, a pretty good chain of custody in terms of the documentation that goes out there. that goes out there. And there is every incarnation that I've seen across the country in terms of, you know, things that are less than that, more than just paper-only. So, I think there's a number of options out there. You know, I would probably say, as, from my perspective, ultimately comes down to sort of a matter of personal preference in terms of, you know, whether you feel comfortable flipping through an iPad or some other gadget in terms of looking at the packet or whether you feel more comfortable having the printed version there. So, ultimately, you know, that's a, probably more of an individual preference as well in terms of, is that what's best for each of you individually? But in terms of technology, there's no technology limitation relative to, you know, this type of a process. Lots of people do it.
Yeah. Are there technology issues? For example, public records-type issues or whatever. Security, you mentioned.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, security and whatever, you know, privileged information is in there needs to be, you know, very thoughtfully categorized and very thoughtfully organized. Probably adds a little bit more upfront times in terms of organizing all the documents so that they can be, you know, properly sort of vetted and organized. But again, those are all process issues. Those aren't really, I don't think, hurdles.
Along the vein, last week, I was away out of the country and I was able, with some success, not 100% because of the internet issues there, but I was able to call in and also watch and also look at the packet while we were going through the documents on, online. Had some discussions with Kate about this. And apparently, we have a new software or an app that allows the packet to be seen in, you know, the way, because it used to be very much more difficult.
Yes, I, thank you for pointing that out. We upgraded over the summer our, the existing product that we use right now, which certainly in the back office, I think, makes the organization of the packet much easier to process and certainly easier to, probably to see on your end. Our goal, as we roll that out, is actually to get more, more departments, boards, and commissions actually using that. So, I think we have three or four now that are using it. And then hopefully, we'll pick up the pace here as we get into the summer. We're sort of through a lot of the learning curves, and I think we'll look to get a lot more folks using that, because it'll be better for the organization if we have more people using that piece of software.
Well, I was going to point out one issue. I have an iPad about this size. And when we were viewing the budgets of various departments, they would come up this way. So, I would turn my...
And then it flips.
And then they would go this way.
Yeah.
So, I was really... So, that, that, some of the documents, I guess, that are on, not a land, not a portrait, but a landscape, are not showing actually.
We can look at that. That's probably just a...
I suspect that's a setting.
Yes, a setting, yes.
Yeah, maybe. This is an issue that I've been interested in since I was on the board, talking to First Patty Park, and then I've talked to Margie and also Kate about it. But it is, it is a lot of paper that we deal with. And to me, that's an environmental issue, as small as it is, it's, it's still...
It adds up.
It adds up. And so, I would be thrilled if we could somehow have our...
Well, you're going to have an opportunity, because this, this old Neanderthal...
There's a little left to change.
You mean, you're older and grouchy than I am? I didn't realize that.
The Neanderthal who's formerly an IT guy. I like my paper. Okay, anything else? We can move on. Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to warrant article reviews. And the first one is for the April 9th special town meeting. And we have three Newberry College acquisition warrant articles. So, there are two town meetings that are being called on April 9th. The first town meeting has three warrant articles. The first warrant article is a collective bargaining warrant article that we've already taken a position on, and that's the approval of the police contract. And then there's Article II of the first town meeting. And that is an article that authorizes the purchase of Newberry College. And just as a matter of information for the board and the public, this board has established a Newberry College Acquisition Advisory Committee, which has been hard at work analyzing the potential of purchasing Newberry College and formulating a bid strategy. We are somewhat at the mercy of Newberry College's process, and they have put out an offering memo. And as I understand it, there's been a lot of interest from potential developers and other buyers, potential buyers of Newberry College. And so, right now, we're in a period of, of Newberry showing the campus around, touring, and then qualified buyers have been given access to some documents for which we as, the town has been certified, if that's the right word, as a qualified buyer. And so, our staff has had access to those documents. And we've been looking at the campus and analyzing the purchase. The committee has hired a deal advisor. I'm chairing the committee along with select person Heller. And we'll transition after May 7th to select person Heller, chairing the committee. I'll be happy to continue participating if this board is so inclined to let me continue But Newberry, as we understand it, at some point in the next few weeks, we don't know exactly when, is going to make a call for offers. And at that point, we'll have an opportunity to put in an offer. That call for offers chances, we believe, will be after April 9th. So, we'll not, we're not going to be in a position to ask town meeting, even if we're successful on April 9th, to authorize a purchase. So, what I'm going to be suggesting to this board is for Article II to accept the recommendation of the advisory committee for a no action. Article III of the first town meeting is a resolution. The resolution was originally penned by Mr. Harris, John Harris, and Anita Johnson, along with some others. It's been quite a team involved in that effort. And the resolution encourages the select board to consider the purchase of Newberry College. And the resolution has gone through some rounds of wordsmithing between the petitioners, the advisory committee, frankly, myself. And we've come up with what I think is a pretty good resolution. And the goal of the resolution is to get a sense of town meeting, and hopefully, it's a good, strong sense that town meeting has our back and really wants us to purchase Newberry College. And if we get a good, strong vote of town meeting, that will help us and strengthen our bid, because we're going to have, when we make a bid for Newberry College, we're going to have to have, as a contingency, a vote of town meeting. And if we have a good, strong show of support from town meeting in advance, that will be a signal to, to Newberry and to the market that the town really wants to purchase Newberry College or the campus of Newberry College. And the trustees should not be afraid of that contingency. So, we're looking, we'll be looking for a good, strong, hopefully, show of support from town meeting. And it's, and it's worded in a way to really help us make the bid. And then, what got, what got this all started, and I'll let Ms. Frauley speak for herself, is Ms. Frauley circulated a petition, which is, which became Article I of the second town meeting, which, using different language, is an author, is an attempt to give us the authority to acquire Newberry College. So, so, we're not, as I said, we're not ready to make an, to do an authorization. So, what we're looking for from town meeting, hopefully, if this board accepts the work that's been done to date, is vote, hopefully, a resolu, the support for the resolution that the advisory committee voted, with the support of the petitioners of the original resolution. And, and also, the resolution also has the strategic support of the Newberry College Acquisition Committee. And this was one of their recommendations, for us to seek a good, strong show of support from town meeting. So, that's kind of the summary. With that, I'll turn...
Can I just add one thing? We knew that there was a possibility that we would not be ready on April 9th to put forward an article, warrant article, asking town meeting to authorize the purchase. So, we inserted in the May town meeting a warrant article authorizing the purchase. So, that, we have two bites at the apple here. We're going to miss this one clearly, because Newberry is just not ready. And so, we were hoping that we would make the next one, but who knows? I mean, this is always, it's a very uncertain process, and their deadlines have slipped and slipped and slipped. Each time they've set them, they have slipped by at least a couple of weeks or maybe more. So, it's just going to take some time, and we have to be patient.
Right. And I'll also say, if we miss the May timeframe, there's always the opportunity to call a town meeting with just a few weeks' notice. So, it's even not fatal if we miss the May deadline, if things just don't come together. And, yeah, I'll also say that, you know, the Newberry trustee, you know, what's happened at Newberry College is kind of a, an unfortunate trend with the small colleges. And Newberry has been quite responsible in how they're approaching completing the education plans of their students. And I believe the, the Department of Higher Education has been very complimentary. There's been a lot of care in how they're treating the students. And there's a lot, there's a very big contrast with what's happening there as to what happened, say, at Mount Ida. And there are a lot of, and I think even what I've, some of the things I've heard is the Department of Higher Education is looking at what's going on at Newberry and the way, the way they're approaching their students as a model, if, if other colleges have to go, go through this unfortunate chain of events, you know, Newberry's doing a good job of it. And the trustees of Newberry have a fiduciary obligation to achieve the highest value. And they're, and they're going to be, and they are regulated by the Attorney General. So, whatever transaction transpires is going to be subject to state review. So, it's not like we can just come in and swoop in and, without oversight. So, it's, it's a delicate process. It's going to take time. There's uncertainty. We don't know how much it's going to cost. But I think we have a really good team working on it. So, with that said, Ms. Frauley, as, as the petitioner, would you like, this is a public hearing, so...
Regina Frauley, town meeting member from Precinct 16. And I hope, the positive creator of this petition, in order for us to be ready, whatever the day turns out to be, even if we have to do a summer special town meeting, you're going to be more prepared for having gone through this process, which the petition forced you to have to do, and you're doing it. And you will be very well-prepared. We have the major parcel study that was revived 13 months ago, and Newberry was on that. But other things, other places were on it. It's impossible to do this level of intensive research for all of them, and this has come to a head because of this particular property being available when it was. I have two levels. I've added another document in for the combined reports, and it should be in your packet. My original article was said that I want an elementary school there. We've had discussions about this. This is not about the past. This is about the future. We have, in my original explanation, I just talk about the situation as we are now. We lease property for 1.2 million this year, 1.4 next year. As the old joke goes, a million here, a million there, pretty soon, you're talking about real money. So, we've got our kids scattered, et cetera, and this is an opportunity to do something to relieve that in the short run. But what really matters is the future. And I know you, some of you understand, at the federal, at the state, and at our own local level, we are part of the consortium, the 15-community consortium, that has given a goal commitment. And it's only a goal, because things happen. The market could fall through. Anything can happen like it did in 2008. But each community has made a commitment to try to achieve a certain number of units. And it's a lot of units by the next 11 years. In the greater Boston area, we're talking about a goal of 185,000 units. In 2040, if you take the Mass Area Planning Council presentation, well over 400,000 for that same general greater Boston area. So, we are looking in Brookline, and according to the Wall Street Journal, a rough goal in the next 11 years of 1,700 additional units to the ones we've already licensed. You can give, you can take. We might do more, we might do less, but it's a goal. And what are we going to do? The assumption that I think a reasonable person would make is that most of these units are going to have children. And if they don't arrive with children, they're going to have children. At some point, we're going to need to put them in healthy, adequate space for learning. When I did, and it's in some of this reading that I hope all town meeting members will do, when I attended the comprehensive plan from 2000 and 2005, this was the incipient time for this whole plan that's now coming to fruition. And the co-chairs said, in my presence, that we're looking at a ninth and possibly a 10th elementary school in Brookline for the housing that they expected and the population they expected. Well, it's happening. We've got the ninth at Baldwin. What would be wonderful, the way you are already mastering as much as you can about the Newberry, so that you are in the best position to make good decisions and recommendations and negotiate, et cetera, despite a few variables that are waiting to be found. It's the same idea for this school. This property has to have the opportunity. I wish it weren't narrowed down to just an elementary, but the town moderator won't let me take that word out. I was very flexible as to what kind of schools you could do there, whether you did a junior high or whatever. Whatever the community wants to do is fine by me, but I wasn't allowed to remove that word, according to the moderator. So, the goal, however, is the same, no matter what you do, is to get ready. Get ready for the future. It's coming. It's, it's already happening. And just as you've done on Newberry now with this extra research, you will be ready for when that full growth happens. And what a joy, instead of crisis management, last-minute this, where can we put it, neighborhood fights, et cetera. I think that Newberry is large enough for almost every wish list that people in different departments have. We can have as much space for elementary schools, that seven square miles will need additional housing. We can do housing. We can do outdoor recreation. Somebody wants the swimming pool. There's room enough there to do it all. And it's right across the street from that magnificent reservoir that we've put a small fortune into rehabilitating, and it's there and open to the public. Lots of parking, all kinds of good things up there. But even if you argue about those details, what the goal here is to get ready for the future. future. And if it's really going to happen by 2030, that's around the corner. I don't know if all of us will be there, but it's a corner that many of you, Heather, I think you'll be turning that corner very easily. But some of us may not make that turn. But I'm really proud of the efforts that are going into this research. It's being done at a professional level, with details that matter, the economics, et cetera. I wish you luck with the creative financing, because I know that's how you're looking at it, creative financing. And that would be great. I would love to find a few millionaires to donate. I'd be glad to put their name on it. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer. But I've given you the generic, I do hope you'll read the specifics, because it is research. It was done on the federal, state, and local level to show that we're at a crook of growth that's happening. It's here, folks. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you. John Harris, town meeting member, Precinct 8, and in this case, I guess I'd say representing the Newberry group, which you are correct, it is a fairly large number of citizens interested in this issue. Our resolution, or the resolution as it stands now, with all of this modification and I think improvement, it focuses on the purchase of the Newberry campus. And it very deliberately puts a decision in terms of uses to later, because working on the purchase is what matters now, because we're at the mercy of Newberry's timeline. The resolution is completely and totally agnostic regarding uses. You will see in the second whereas, there are several of, just read that the campus may be used, quote, "to help meet a variety of current and future municipal and school needs, including open space, affordable housing, educational facilities, among, and very importantly, among other uses," unquote. It's very important that it says that. And I can tell you that in every meeting that I've been at recently, where Newberry has come up, new ideas come. At an environmental meeting a couple days ago, the idea of making part of it a wildlife runway came up. Hadn't heard that before.
Wildlife?
Wildlife runway.
For birds taking off?
I think for mammals, I think. But anyway, we can, we can deal with it later, that's the point. At a meeting at the senior center this afternoon, the idea was brought up of what about turning one of the buildings there into a satellite senior center. So, again, can be, can be, can, we decide later on. The resolution is intended as a rallying point, so that every member, hopefully, or as many as possible of town meeting, no matter what their view on any other issue in town, can hopefully get behind this. The chair is absolutely right, we all worked very closely with members of the subcommittees, two different subcommittees, in full advisory, both of whom passed this wording, as you see it unanimously, that's fantastic. We worked closely, as the chair mentioned, with the chair, and he added two fantastic improvements, which were, first was a commitment to purchase the entire campus. Before that, there'd been a discussion, maybe just part of it, but if we buy the whole campus, then the town has control in terms of decisions of any future use. So that's a good thing. And then even better, is a commitment to proclaim the possi- willingness to employ eminent domain.
Willingness to consider.
To consider. So, the beauty of that is that that idea coming from a person with this authority has much more oomph behind it than a group of citizens making that, proposing that idea. So that's fantastic. If we really had our wish about us, what we would have done in the May town meeting is proposed a follow-up resolution urging that, hopefully upon the successful purchase of the property, that the decision-making process on uses be very leisurely, very complete, very thoughtful, involving everybody in town, hopefully, and letting everybody brainstorm. And I agree with Regina, that at 7.87 acres, the campus is large enough for many of the ideas that folks have proposed, and that's fantastic. So our hope for the select board tonight, and for the town meeting on, special town meeting April 9th, is a very strong statement by both groups in support of suppressing, expressing Brookline's determination to acquire the campus.
Right.
Thank you.
Right. And I think, given the timeframes, we're, we're not going to be, we're going to be, assuming we were positioned to make a bid, we would be making a bid before we knew exactly what we would be using it for. And one of the charges to the Newberry Acquisition Committee was that they would not be considering what the campus would be used for, that would be a process after the fact. But I'm going to just announce publicly, as I have in a number of venues, one exception to that, which is if, we may need to make some land use decisions for a piece of the property in pursuit of our financing strategy. So for example, one of the things we're considering, and I've said this in a number of venues, and also Superintendent Bott sent out a letter to school families, that one of the things we're considering is, on the west side of the campus, the potential of converting what is now their academic center, excuse me, to an early childhood education center, and also some offices. And the reason that can be used as a financing strategy is, we are currently renting space for those functions. So if we redirect the rentals into debt service, that can form the basis of a partial finance strategy, so we don't have to go to the voters for that. So, we don't yet know how much this is going to cost, and part of the charge of the Acquisition Committee is to consider financing strategies. So we're going to, you know, the, we're going to have a lot of decisions ahead of us in a very short timeframe, and I suspect, once, once things get going, it's going to be wild and woolly for a while, until we get a bid.
It's not wild and woolly right now?
Well, it's woolly, I don't know how wild it is, yet. So, any discussion, any other comment from the public? Discussion from the board?
No, in the interest of our, the clock that's beating down on us, I think that we've said everything we needed to say about it.
I have a housekeeping question.
Yep.
The text on page 324-
Right.
-appears to be the same as the text on page 322. I just want to make sure that-
I'm looking at page 324, and assuming it's the same as on page 322, I guess it doesn't matter which one.
I just wanted to make sure.
I think that the 322 is the emailed version.
Yeah, it's the same. I just want to make sure I'm not missing something.
Okay, so the, the, "Be it further resolved," I'll just read that section, is that "Town meeting calls on the select board to work as quickly as is prudent and practicable with other town boards and departments to continue to pursue the purchase of Newberry, of the Newberry College campus, including consideration of the use of eminent domain authority, and consider appropriate financing strategies to affect the acquisition." So, I will move no action on Special Town Meeting 1, Article 2, that's the Acquisition Authorization article. So the motion is no, a no-action recommendation. All those in favor of no-action recommendation, please say aye, select person. Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I will move the resolution on page 324, which is the same as recommended by the advisory, full advisory committee unanimously, which is unusual. So all those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes.
That's a substitution for Article 3.
Correct.
Yes.
And then, no action on Special Town Meeting 2, Article 1, which is an alternate acquisition article. So the motion is no action. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Just to be clear, on the resolution, the chair didn't state his vote on Article 3.
I voted yes. Yeah. If I didn't state it, that's an omission, since I helped write it. It would have been unusual, so.
They got their votes anyway.
Right. But it's better that it's unanimous. Okay, moving on to the next wave of warrant articles. I, I was asked to do Article 21st, so we'll do that. Article 20. And this is the article regarding menstrual products.
I want to thank the board for taking us first. This is Carter Mucha, who is a senior at BHS, and has homework to get back to. And it's already late. So, I just want to start out by talking a little bit about everybody's new favorite topic, which of course is menstruation. The average female-bodied person will have a menstrual period lasting three to five days, 12 times a year, for about 40 years. Having a period is a reality for 52% of the population, each of whom will use almost 17,000 tampons or pads over their lifetime. Yet women and girls, and all female-bodied individuals, in fact, continue to be taught that having a period is their private problem, to be hidden or treated as an illness in some cases. This attitude pervades public policy. Low-income moms, excuse me, I'm getting a cold. Low-income moms receiving WIC cannot use it for menstrual products. Medicaid and food stamps do not cover tampons and napkins. And in 36 states, menstrual products are taxed as a luxury item. Menstruation is the brunt of jokes and shaming, instead of being treated for what it is, a completely natural, everyday bodily function experienced by more than half the population. We provide toilet paper for those other natural, everyday bodily functions that send people to a restroom. It is ridiculous that we do not do the same with menstrual hygiene products, but it is the case. If approved by town meeting, this warrant article would make the town of Brookline the first municipality in the country to provide free menstrual hygiene products in its public buildings. Brookline has a chance to be a leader again on an important issue, and to address something gaining recognition as fundamental to the just treatment of women and the goal of gender equity. So while being the first in the US, the first US municipality to take this step, Brookline will actually be in very good company, and on the crest of a wave of policies that are focused on what is now typically referred to as menstrual equity. Illinois, New York, and California have all passed laws mandating free products in public schools and/or shelters and prisons. Massachusetts Legislature is considering legislation, it's called H-1959, if you want to look it up, that mirrors what was passed in Illinois and New York with mandated free products in schools, shelters, and prisons. We're in conversation with the school committee about getting ahead of that bill, because it would be a mandate on our schools as well, and adopting this policy in practice across our schools now. There's also federal legislation, which I won't go into, brought by New York Representative Grace Meng, which would actually make it a lot easier for states and municipalities to do some of this implementation, because it speaks to the money behind it. Carter and I are both happy to answer questions around the cost. I know you may want to talk about that possibly phased implementation of the bylaw, that I know is the preference of our department heads. I was pleased to see, in Melissa's estimates, I hope you all have that memo from her, that supplies, after implementation of the machinery, could come to less than $7,500 per year for the town. But before we get to questions, I really want you to hear from Carter Mucha. She is co-chair of the BHS NARAL chapter, and she's really taken the lead on this article over at BHS, and she's going to talk more about how this idea started. It did start at BHS, how it became a cause, and what the students are saying about it.
Thank you, Rebecca. Sentiment for this article began with a 2017 article in the Brookline High School student newspaper, The Sagamore. It was an article written by then-high school student Sarah Grafter, who was also a member of the NARAL Pro-Choice Club at the school. This article was meant to draw attention to period shaming in the Brookline High, Brookline Schools and beyond, the sentiment of treating menstruation as an illness and a fault rather than a natural facet of female-bodied life. And this warrant article has grown out of that student passion, has been brought to fruition by Rebecca's hard work, and also extensive policy knowledge, which I will be the first to admit that I do not have. So this article is extremely important, both to the citizens of Brookline and beyond. It provides female-bodied people with the necessary products to manage their natural body functions, as Rebecca mentioned, and as was mentioned in Sarah Grafter's Sagamore article, if we provide toilet paper, we should also be providing menstrual products. This article would also prevent menstruating people from having to travel great lengths to acquire the products that they need to manage their cycles. Excuse me. Much of the time, people who are menstruating need to travel very great distances to acquire the products that they need, which forces them to miss significant amounts of school and work, which puts them at a disadvantage to their peers who do not menstruate. Providing sanitary products in bathrooms also prevents female-bodied people from using less sanitary methods to manage their periods, and ensures their safety, which is what we should be doing. This warrant article, this is an interesting point, it also includes men's and gender-neutral bathrooms as locations where menstrual products will be distributed. And thus, the article can also have a hand in preventing discrimination against transgender men and gender non-conforming individuals who do menstruate. Forcing them to go to great lengths, and frequently public lengths, such as school nurses' office in the Brookline Public Schools, to acquire the menstrual products they need is shaming for them, and also increases their struggles with gender dysphoria that they already experience on a daily basis. And this article is aimed at promoting inclusivity and reflecting Brookline's values of acceptance in all its forms. And lastly, providing menstrual hygiene products in Brookline's public bathrooms will promote the normalization of periods, and decrease the amount of shaming associated with menstrual cycles. Making it commonplace will educate young people, support menstruating individuals, and allow Brookline to once again be an example of diversity and inclusion across Massachusetts. Please take it into consideration.
So you mentioned the potential of phasing, phasing it in, and that would certainly ameliorate the budget impact to a degree. But that's not in the bylaws written, so how do we handle that?
The phasing is implied in the bylaw, because we put a dis- an effective date, two years out.
Oh, I see, I see.
So that should, should town meeting vote for this, the town has two years, or whatever it is, between now and then to ramp up. And I was also just looking, so that's, that's the phase-in opportunity that's presented, by the way, the bylaw was the, the warrant article was written. The other thing I noticed is that we have two, just in this town meeting for the, for the next fiscal year, there are two special appropriations that speak to, I believe, comfort stations in parks or recreation facilities. We can start looking at things like that. If we're doing renovations and comfort stations, and this passes, we should absolutely be looking at taking advantage of that work that's, that will already be funded, assuming town meeting passes those special appropriations. It's those sorts of things that are already, that are already before us as opportunities to take a look at phasing it in, and that can be done on a, you know, you can set priorities that way.
So we have a memo, this is a great idea, by the way. I really, you know, I really, as a person who has faced the issues of menstruation, you know, it's, sometimes you just don't have the product with you, and it's really difficult to deal with. So I think it's a great idea. I do notice that we have a memo in front of us from our deputy town administrator, which discusses the issue of cost. Do you have that memo?
Yes, I do.
Okay, with the chart. Okay. And I noticed in the last paragraph that there, there's an expressed concern by departments about how we prevent abuses of people taking way more product than they need, because it's free. I know that in bathrooms, lots of toilet paper is dispensed, you know, in little, small little containers, and sheet by sheet, and it's not practical to take. But here, the question is, how would you- But here, the question is, how would you deal with that issue? Do you have any suggestions? Are there other models, other places must have faced this concern?
I think the reason that most of the places that have implemented free dispensing have implemented it with machine dispensing as opposed to putting up dishes of the product is for that reason, that it makes it more difficult to stand there with the current machines that require a quarter, which of course nobody carries anymore unless they have to do coin-operated laundry. The idea of standing at the machine and turning the handle several times over is, I think, less appealing than simply grabbing a collection. I think it's inevitable that people in need of these products are going to take more than one if they are in need of these products, and frankly, I have no problem with that. It's one of the reasons the legislation is, that's been passed in other states, is about addressing the needs of particularly economically low-income persons or those who are incarcerated. I have not seen anything in the research, Carter, I don't know whether you have, where this has been implemented, where that has been a terrible problem. It's always a concern that's raised, and I do know that Melissa mentioned something in here about the libraries have had problem with toilet paper and paper towel being opened and the product coming out. I've been in town meeting for almost 18 years. I've never heard anybody talk about a budget impact of toilet paper being stolen from our public restrooms. And so I anticipate that if we have a similar problem, it will come up. If it has a budget impact, I imagine we will hear about that, but I don't anticipate it as a huge problem, and I think the dispensing machines make it much more difficult to do that.
And the cost is relatively small in terms of.
The annual supplies that's been estimated here, yeah, I think at less than $7,500 a year, it's absolutely extraordinary to do that, to be able to do that across the town. And I would just add, although it's a relatively small piece of the implementation cost, the cost of the machines, it's obviously the biggest upfront cost, which is one reason to implement it over some years, so we can spread that out a bit. I know Charlie Simmons, when I talked to him about this, and it's reflected in this memo, talked about the need for disposal units in some of the bathrooms as well. And I just want to point out that disposal costs would and should occur regardless of this warrant article. They are not forced by this article. We're very happy to have awareness of the disposal needs raised by this article, but disposal of restroom trash is regulated by OSHA. It's unrelated to how or where or whether the provision of what is disposed of is provided, is in the room. And actually, as the town recognizes and responds to the needs of trans and gender non-conforming individuals in our public restrooms, those disposal containers should be appearing anyway.
Yeah, I'd like to give a shout-out to Carter, who I've known for many years, and she does incredible work in high school. But, you know, I also want to sort of thank you for bringing this to our attention. I had no clue, and I think most men, you know, had no clue as to these issues. And I also want to point out that what I think is important, and that is, you've addressed this issue, is not an affordability issue. So it's not just prisons and homeless shelters and schools, whatever. It's everyone, and I think that's an important thing, and it would be something unique in the country from what I understand from the materials that Brookline does. So, yes, thank you, and I think this is a very important subject.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this warrant article?
Snaps.
Any discussion, more discussion from the board? Do we want to vote, or do we want to think about it?
Why don't we vote on it?
Okay. So I'll move a favorable action recommendation on the article as written. I, it looks like it's a very well put-together warrant article.
Have we been to the advisory committee yet?
No, not yet. We're before the Human Services Subcommittee on April 10.
I suspect there'll be a tougher audience than this.
We're getting ready for it.
Just give them a push.
So I'll move the warrant article as written. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you all so much, this is very exciting. On to the next step.
Right.
Good luck.
Let's go back to, we have a couple of housekeeping annual warrant articles we see every year. For those of us who've been on the board a while, fully familiar with it, but if you can just explain Article 3 very quickly.
Happy to. We keep money in the bank, and we don't get as many fees. Because we have this agreement, we will keep a certain dollar amount in the bank. And this way, we don't receive fees if there are bounces or perhaps a school, a school account will get free checks from the bank, things like that.
Right, so the point is, we keep a certain amount of money to avoid the fees, and actually it was until, it was only until recently that we, we never took advantage of this until just maybe.
2010, 2009.
Until interest rates went down to practically nothing. It didn't pay to take advantage of it, but when interest rates went down to nothing, it became advantageous. But I suspect as interest rates are rising, it just pays to evaluate whether the arrangements still make sense, but I certainly trust you to do that.
Thank you.
That's a function I'm glad to delegate.
Thank you.
Any discussion, well, this is a public hearing. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak on this warrant article, now is the time. Any discussion from the board?
Let's vote.
So I'll move a favorable recommendation on Article 3, as we've done ever since I've been on this board. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And the next one is not one we've seen every year, but hopefully it'll be not controversial. Article 4.
Good evening. Article 4 is filed as part of a requirement that the state is now mandating that departments that have revenue coming from cable companies related to the franchise agreements establish a revolving fund. Previously, we had treated those revenues as a gift account. We receive money for public education and government, which is called PEG funding. As a result of the agreements that we have with RCN and Comcast, they pay $40,000 from each license for capital-related expenses, and then we transmit that money to Brookline Interactive, which is the entity that's providing the cable service in town. So this warrant article essentially is just enabling us to establish a revolving fund so we can continue that arrangement.
Okay, this seems to me to be a housekeeping item.
Currently, that money goes into the general fund?
So currently, it goes into a segregated account. DOR is now requiring us to create a revolving fund for that action, so. We do have, we do take in franchise fee payments that do go to the general fund. We adopted special legislation in 1984, which allowed the town to direct 3% of the franchise fee for general government purposes.
Okay. And this is a public hearing. Any members of the public wish to comment on this? I see none. Any more discussion from the board? I will propose that we vote a favorable action recommendation. All those in favor of that favorable action recommendation, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And Article 8 is an article we see every year. So Mr. McKay, now I'm just going to step out for a minute, so Mr. Franco.
Franco.
I'm an equal opportunist.
Forget her.
Get up, name tag again. You're on.
Yes, Gary McKay here, representing the Board of Assessors, who have voted unanimously to bring this warrant article again this year for your consideration and ask for your support. Warrant Article 8 is an article that's been submitted regularly since fiscal year 1989, and it allows us to take to town meeting a provision that would double, up to double, the amount of certain statutory exemptions that taxpayers are eligible for. The doubling of the exemption, we estimate, if this warrant article passes, would cost approximately $54,300, which would come out of the overlay reserve account. For reference to fiscal year 18, which is the last complete year of the administration of these exemptions, we had 107 taxpayers who are eligible within these various categories, and they're spelled out in the detail of the article. But for example, a disabled veteran who would normally might receive $400 from a property tax exemption would be able to receive up to $800. So, or a senior who might get $500 can get $1,000. So it's called the doubling exemption, but does require town meeting authorization annually. So we ask for your support.
Are these, I know you referenced 2018, but are these numbers relatively stable over time, or are they trending up or down?
They're relatively stable, one, but this year we are seeing an uptick in the number of applications. Applications are open until April 1st, so another week, or just about. We are seeing a slight increase in the applications. We're encouraged by that, appreciate the opportunities to speak about these exemptions and your board's support. Although it's a small increase, it's in the right direction, in the numbers.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Any, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public who wish to speak? As I said, this is something we do every year. I think it's the right thing to do. It doesn't cost that much, it comes out of the overlay account.
I just quickly want to say, this is one of a number of different programs that we offer. We heard about the fund earlier during the budget review process. There's also the deferment program, so if anybody has questions about whether they qualify, or if we can provide some assistance, please contact the assessor's office or the finance department, and I'm more than happy to engage in a conversation and see what might work.
Thank you, Mr. Franco, for that. And also, it does not include the senior work-offs, the 30 individuals that are in the senior work-off program. So they're in addition to this. These are just the ones that we're allowed to double. Thank you.
And April 1st is a very important date.
April 1st.
Okay.
Monday.
So I will move a favorable action recommendation. All those in favor, please say aye. Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Heller, Hamilton.
Aye.
I've screwed up everyone's names tonight.
She must be tired.
Right. And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now let's move on to something a little more controversial. Article 11. And this is an article that has the town accepting an easement. And who's going to tell us about this? Mr. Simpson, is that you?
It is me. I'm lucky enough to have, right here, he had originally been double-booked tonight, but was able to finish his earlier meeting before he had thought it was going to be over, so he's also available to answer questions. The 111 Cypress High School Expansion Project proceeds apace. Board member Heller can of course tell you all about it, but this warrant article authorizes a very important piece of it, which is the exchange of property rights necessary to effectuate the project. We're building the annex both over the D-line and onto what is now MBTA property, will always be MBTA property. In order to do that, the MBTA needs to grant us easements. Part of the deal we've struck with them involves relocating the Brookline Hills T-Station. It will ultimately end up partly on town property, so we need to give them an easement for that. This will be all memorialized in a mutual easement agreement, but because it is a disposition and acquisition of property rights, it does require a two-thirds vote at town meeting, which is, this is meant to do. So it is, the negotiations are continuing. We have, the plans are as detailed as we could make them right now. The, there is, as you can see, it's basically, if you look at the top one, the top-left, lightly shaded gray area is the town property that we'll be giving an easement to the MBTA. The dark gray is MBTA property that, well, they'll be granting an easement to us. In addition, there is a wavy, light gray pedestrian easement. This is a development that the neighbors, as well as transit advocates, have pushed for, and we've been able to accommodate. So it'll effectively be a pedestrian easement from Brinkton Road up through the west side of the 111 Cypress property, and it's an egress path to that T-Station there. We do note that it does cross an existing easement that one of our neighbors has. That will not be affected, it will just be a pedestrian easement, demarcated on the ground, but there'll be no fencing or excessive lighting to bother the neighbors or anything like that.
So I know there are, this topic of discussion is the exact layout of the MBTA station and the relationship to the high school. It seems to me, however that discussion ends up, certainly, the dark gray easement, the MBTA to the town, and then the crosshatch easement, the town to the MBTA in the upper left, is going to, you know, have to be made. The pedestrian easement, is that dependent on what happens?
Not really, because MBTA requires that there be an emergency egress. And the emergency, excuse me, the emergency egress is on the south side of the tracks. Is that, that's correct, right? I've got my directions right? Okay. So people enter on the north, and can leave on the north, but there has to be an emergency egress from the south. So that's, this easement is at least accommodating that. Furthermore, let me say something about the station. So the MBTA has developed new standards for its stations because they plan on having a three-car model, and the stations need to be bigger. So while we are, the entrance is changing, and the length of the station is changing, that's all MBTA mandated, if you will. And one of the benefits, however, and people are saying, well, you know, it's a little further down, and so we have to walk some more steps to get to it, and that's accurate. But on the other hand, under the building, there will be, because the station will extend under the building, that's an area for pedestrians to take shelter. When it rains, when it snows, when it's too windy, how often do we have that in New England? Quite a lot. So that, to me, is a very good, convenient thing for people, for pedestrians. I hate standing out at a tee when it's pouring rain. That's really the worst. So this gives pedestrians some protection. You know, we really didn't have a choice in terms of where to put. You know, we really didn't have a choice in terms of where to put the entrance. That's what the MBTA requires with this new three-car system, so.
And if, there's actually, Nancy caught an important nuance of what we're trying to do here. The, this, this is just, town meeting, the town meeting, but will of course just authorize us to give and take the easements if we want. We have a lot of play within that to negotiate, for example, the pedestrian easement, how much of an easement it will ultimately be. We, we would be able to continue to negotiate that and let the, moreover, let the plans develop. But we do need to move now, because otherwise, we, we risk the entire construction schedule if we can't get these easements in place on time.
So, the.
Let me just say that, you have to note that that easement is in a driveway. The driveway is the back driveway of the high school where the loading dock is. There will be trucks coming in there. There's already an easement for a couple of, I think, three cars from.
From the neighbor.
Neighbors, and that easement existed before, and it's, it's still there. So, we're gonna have to look at how safe that is. I think that emergency egress is different from, you know, lots and lots of people going back and forth. So, we'll, we'll have to look at that. But, and Jonathan said, that we need to do this now in order to meet the timetable that we're operating under.
So, I think, you know, one key point, let me, let me phrase this as a question. No matter, I, I know that there's controversy right now on the exact design of the station, where the entrance is going to be, how far people gonna walk here or there, where the desire line is, et cetera. This warrant article really is this warrant article. My perception is, and please confirm whether it's correct or incorrect, that these easements are kind of independent of that discussion. We need the, we need those easements, we need these easements no matter where, ultimately, exactly the, the entrances.
Correct.
And then, the discussion of exactly the pedestrian, where the pedestrian entrance is, is independent of these easements.
Yes, but the MBTA has these standards, so were they willing to waive the standards in order to accommodate a different access? I have no idea. But that's not up for discussion at this point.
And the easements are crafted in a way that if, if, if they won't budge on that point, we will be able to design the station. If there is some budge, we will just, we can potentially negotiate these, the size of the easement down, but this is as, as big as it needs to be based on what we think. And we can't, so.
That's a nuance we're gonna really have to communicate, because the danger is this getting caught up into that discussion and it not passing.
Well, that would be a shame, because.
The project couldn't stop.
We couldn't, we, you know, we, the project might even fail in that instance. We have to go across T in order to get the size of a building we want. If, I suppose we could be willing to build it on the other side of the T and build it up and, you know, make it higher than everything else in the entire neighborhood, but I don't think anybody'd be too happy with that either. So.
And there's nothing hanging over the MBTA that delaying this, granting this easement would incentivize them to make a change? This is, this is the town asking for this to happen, and if we don't grant the easements as they're proposed and then engage in the subsequent negotiation, the project is not gonna happen.
Right. I mean, forgetting, you know, the MBTA, sort of the price of the air rights, if you will, is the cost of a station. And, but they have their mandates in terms of, and standards in terms of what a station would look like. It's got to accommodate the three cars, you know, the whole thing. So, maybe Ray can add to that.
The secondary function of this easement is to allow, this is one of the only access points for rail equipment to get onto the rails to do maintenance. So, it's a dual-purpose easement, one for pedestrian flow as well as their access onto the tracks.
Are, I know there's a, the meeting tomorrow, are any MBTA officials gonna be there?
We hadn't invited, the, there was a meeting tonight.
So, we're just gonna be talking to ourselves, and then we're gonna be saying, well, the MBTA is telling us to do this, and so the public is gonna be venting, and?
Tonight, I was at an MBTA meeting sponsored by Tommy Fattolo, the state rep, and the T was there. And I was there, and the other.
And they got a mouthful, and?
They heard a lot of input, and that input's gonna be repeated tomorrow.
Because, you know, I'd like this advocacy to be effective, because I looked at the design, just, just the pedestrian desire line just didn't make sense, just knowing, knowing that, that's kind of my home station.
Well, part of the problem is that the park across the street playground needs to have a certain amount of footage for soccer field, for baseball, et cetera. And so, we can't cut, you can't have pedestrians cutting across soccer field in the middle of a game. So, you're essentially having, and the Parks and Rec Commission has seen this problem. You're essentially having people cross Cypress Park, Cypress Field, as we call it, at the same place that they're crossing now, and then they have to walk down a little bit toward the Tappan Gimmie and then cross over to, to the T.
Yeah, under the new design.
Under the new design.
Which I think is terrible.
It was not possible to make it in one line, you know, because of this other issue with the field and how, the use of the field. And the, in essence, the pedestrian path now is the division between the field, part of the field, and the playground part of it. So, I think that the Parks and Rec Commission could, could see that that needs to stay. And so, some people actually will probably, you know, they'll be walking a few feet more on the Tappan side, some people might be walking a few feet more on the Cypress side, not many, probably, that would pretty much be the same. But, you know, there's some realities that you can't, that are hard to change.
Well, this is a public hearing, any members of the public wish to speak on this article? I see none. I'm not gonna propose a vote. I'd like to, I'd like this to play out a little more, see how it develops. If that's okay with everybody? Okay. Thank you. And we're up to Article 24. Ms. LaScoye, what are you trying to do? And just be aware of the hour. And we've been, we've been here now.
Since 5:00.
Since 5:00 o'clock.
At the advisory committee, we have eight cake commemorating 100 years of service of Andy Papasturgen and Peter Ditto.
Combined.
Yeah, that's pretty amazing.
Tonight's TPW. Okay, I wanted to start with the Climate Action Plan. I'm on the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee, and as you know, that, that came to this board last September. And the goal was that the, well, the committee recommended and the board adopted prioritizing planning to achieve zero emissions by 2050, which means no reliance on fossil fuels, town and community-wide, and devising a roadmap in the upcoming year with targets every five years to reach the priority. That's what we're talking about. And we're talking community-wide, the whole community, that's in our last greenhouse gas inventory, it's like 520,000 tons of carbon dioxide emissions. The town is 16,000, about 3% of that. So, we're talking about a small piece of the overall picture, we're talking about what the town is doing. But I think it's important, because the town sets the pace and an example to the wider community. I don't think we really have a chance to make the kinds of changes and adjustments we may, need to make as a town if we aren't doing it in-town government. So, and we're talking about the town, and we're talking now specifically about the town's procurement of electricity, which is 54% of the, of the town's footprint, or about, a little bit less than 2% of all the electricity for the town as a whole. Which brings me now to slides. This is the first one. So, here we have the summary of what I just said. And municipal electricity is 9,000 tons of CO2, which is 7% of the total for the town. And when we're talking about a climate action plan, our first strategy is conservation. And so, I wanted to begin by saying that there has been conservation, looking over the last few years, it's been going down substantially. But Justin Casanova-Davis, who manages this, says cautions that with things that are coming online, like the fossil fuel three schools and the high school, that this probably, this curve will maybe horizontal or start to go up. And these are rough numbers based upon some very tentative assumptions. So, now, if we're going to achieve our goal of fossil fuel green electricity for the town by 2050, which is the goal that we've adopted, it starts with the renewable portfolio standard. Right now, the electricity the town buys is about 20% renewable under state mandate. And the last omnibus energy bill increased the rate of increase of the standard to 2% for the next 10 years. And then it drops back to 1% from 2030 to 2050, which means by 2050, we'll be at 40%, 60% of fossil fuel free coming from the grid, but that leaves us 40% short if we're gonna meet our goal as a town. So, this warrant article's purpose is to, our aim is to close that gap. So, the way that we close the gap is with, and you've heard about it many times, is renewable electric, energy or renewable electricity credits. And I don't want to get into this too much, only to say that a unbundled compliance certificate under this program is the fossil fuel free attribute of a megawatt hour of electricity. So, when we, the town buys a, one of these certificates, it's, it's in doing that, buying green electricity. Now, the good news is that under our current contract, we can do it. There's a paragraph in that contract that offers to the town the ability to purchase whatever percentage in addition to the renewable portfolio standard that the town chooses to obtain green electricity. So, I'm looking here at three alternative scenarios, which, three possible pathways. One is zero by 2030, which some people have mentioned is what we should be doing. That's the blue one. The green one decreased to 50% now, and zero by 2050. And the red one in the middle, that's the zero by 2050, which is what this warrant article is advocating. Taking those and looking at their impact, the zero by 2030 is over 6 million, aggregated 6 million of additional cost between now and 2050. The 20, 50% and get to zero by 2050 is around 4 million. The one that this warrant article is looking at is a little bit more than 2 million, 2.4 million. So, the way, what the warrant article says is that every year, a year, there should be a year-by-year increase in the number of certificates we're buying, and it would look like this. If we went with the red line, it goes from adding, increasing about 4,000 per year to reach the 40% by 2050. The others, because they have more area under the curve, are much more expensive. One of the problems with the 20, the 50% by 2050 is there's a tremendous hit at the beginning, like 110,000, and then it gradually increases after that. And with the zero by 2030, there's also substantial hit in the first, in the next 10 years. The red line, the 20, getting to green by 2050 is just a slow and steady increase, easier to handle. So, this is, these are the numbers in summary. Zero by 2030, the increment is 7%, zero by 2050, the increment is 1.35%, and the other is as you see. So, that's what I would recommend in this warrant article, that we go with the 2050. And any questions? That was quick enough, not staying here all night.
No, it makes a lot of sense, just encourage by doing it gradually, make, you know, it, it hits me as manageable. I know there'll be folks who are impatient and want it to go quicker, but.
So, that's why I put these other graphs in there, because I know there are people that are impatient, so this is a kind of comparison of the different paths. And there's some that are saying 100% immediately, and I did the numbers on that, that would be like, first of all, it would start out around almost 300,000 in the first year, and the aggregate on that would be close to 8 million.
So, I mean, take this extreme case of 100% immediately. I'm not sure I understand what that even means, and I'm not sure I understand what 100% by 2030 or even 2050 means. I assume that in order to get there, in 2050 maybe you can do it by, and you need a new grid. I mean, our current grid's not going to, our current grid is, is composed of everything from wind and solar to, probably not in Massachusetts, but in many areas, coal as well as natural gas, et cetera.
There's no coal in Massachusetts anymore.
Okay, well, there's a lot of natural gas in, that's going into the grid.
And, well, the capacity for renewable supply in Massachusetts currently exceeds the demand, which is why the price for these certificates has dropped substantially in the last few years. And the state and last omnibus bill placed in, and put in place incentives to encourage a continuing increase in supply, to keep the supply ahead of demand. And that's what we're doing, is we're, by doing this, buying those certificates, we're creating the market for developers who will want to supply green and clean electricity. If no one's buying it, no one's going to build it. So, it's a chicken and egg situation.
I guess my question is, can the current grid, the way it's structured and the way it needs a constant supply of electrons, can the current grid be all green from renewable energy, or does it need some other source that can be immediately turned on to?
The grid is, the grid is the grid. That's wires and transformers. We need a smarter grid, we need enhancements in the technology of the grid, we need the grid's ability to do demand response, to shed load at certain times, there are all kinds of technologies that are coming. Actually, the technology's in place, it just needs to be rolled out and the policies put in place to support it. I think between now and 2050, we're gonna see all of those changes. The Commonwealth is committed to that. The Commonwealth is committed to that. The Commonwealth sees that the future of the viability of our economy is based upon being a sustainable Commonwealth, and that means doing this. And Brookline can support it by doing its part, by being a customer. The technology's there, the infrastructure's there, the wind turbines are being built, the solar's being built, the power is coming from Canada. We're working on Vermont and New Hampshire, need to be partners in that. It's a New England-wide effort, and Massachusetts is a leader. And as I say, right now, there's a substantial supply of renewable certificates in the market. It exceeds the demand, and the prices come down accordingly.
This is...
And that's another reason to do it this way. So, I mean, every year, this goes through the budget process, like everything else. It could be that there's a bump in the market, and so the town needs to accommodate that. But the, what the warrant article says is by 2050, and it says make steady progress toward that. It doesn't say exactly how or what. Every year, it says to establish a policy and a practice, basically to go to Constellation, the contractor, and say, this is, we're going to buy 1 and 3/4% or whatever next year.
So I didn't see in the warrant article anything about where those recs come from. So theoretically, we could be financing the construction of solar arrays in Texas or Arizona.
I hope not. We have a energy consultant in the town that works with Justin in managing the purchase. And I believe with the thrust of this warrant article, they'll know where they need to be going, which is to New England unbundled compliance certificates, not some Texas certificates that are cost pocket change. We're talking about real certificates.
I'm just going to put a plug in for...
I didn't feel I had to put that in the warrant article.
I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah.
Anabolic digesters, that's my interest. So I just want to put a plug in at this early stage. That's what I want to see bought.
So the cost of this, I see 40,000...
That's the 40,000 that...
Each year, incremental?
Then I did, then I got tremendous assistance from Justin. He set up a conference call with the energy consultant, building department, and David Jena-Cardis. The energy consultant provided me with the assumptions and a spreadsheet. So that's what I used to develop these charts. So I was wrong in the 3,000, although I'd rather be high than low. So I backed it off from 40,000 to maybe 5,000, 4,800, 4,875.
That's not bad.
This is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on this, now's your time. No one wishes to speak? Has the Climate Action Committee considered this?
No, no. We've set a date for our public hearing on April...
21st.
21st, thank you, David. We just discussed that last night.
Yeah, that's...
So that's a Monday, and that's our next meeting. We will hear about this article as well as 23.
Okay. I'm going to propose we not vote this tonight, but see how this develops.
Putting my Climate Action Committee hat on, yes. Let's hear the recommendation from them, yes.
Yeah. Though the April 22nd is getting late for us.
The advisory committee's full review is the 24th.
Really? 24th of...
April.
April, really?
I believe the reports have to be in May 2nd. Is that correct, Ms. ...
Okay, so 20, yeah. We can, it's manageable, okay. Okay.
David, can you just make sure that these slides get to me and presumably my colleagues up here as well? I want to digest them a little bit.
They're in the packet.
They're in the packet?
It's on this computer. I sent it to Justin, so Justin can send it to you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, they're in the...
I missed them for some reason.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, David.
But actually, if we can get them electronically, that would be helpful.
Could I just take one second here?
Sure.
To make sure that the board is aware that our new sustainability coordinator is in the audience. Her name is Zoe Lynn, and sitting right next to Cara Bruton. And she came to our meeting last night, did an excellent job. She's on, she's hit the ground running. So we're pleased, and we look forward to some great work with her.
Well, welcome aboard. Okay, so we have on the calendar further review and possible votes on some warrant articles that we've taken up previously, and I see some of the petitioners in the audience. So I guess we should take them up and see what we want to do with them. So first up is Article 17, the naming committee, membership. How does folk, how do folks feel about that? And just in summary, what this is proposing is that the naming committee be expanded to be not less than five nor more than seven members. So this is a possible increase of two. And then also includes a member from the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. So the net effect would be one, one position from that commission, and then we would have another position at our disposal to appoint. And the way it was set up is we had, we had one position to appoint, and then one alternate. So this would give us two and one alternate.
I personally think it's a good idea to expand it.
I'm a strong supporter.
Yeah.
Let's just make sure we do the housekeeping to clean up the name of this group.
Yeah. It says Cahir Wyszynski.
What? Cahir?
In the dr, in the...
In the minutes, yeah.
In the minutes, so...
A little karma.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was talking about in the, in 6.8.2, changing Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
Okay, so the motion will be as worded in the warrant, substituting Select Board for Board of Selectmen. I'm sure the petitioner has no issue with that. Okay.
We're here to help you, clean up your warrant article.
Okay, so that's the motion. All those in favor of a favorable action motion on that, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Article 19, I actually missed the discussion on Article 19, and I understand it was a lively discussion. So the, the intent is to ban flavored tobacco products.
And to ban e-cigarettes, including vaporizers and e-huka devices.
It's just to ban flavored tobacco products by moving menthol under the flavor tobacco definition, so it's only flavored tobacco.
Yeah.
Right.
So the TV audience didn't hear a word of that. So why don't you...
Right now, menthol is an exception to the flavor, and this...
Come to the mic, so our vast TV audience can have the benefit of your wisdom. And just identify yourself for the record.
Yes, this is Anthony Isek. I'm the primary petitioner for warrant Article 19. So the main intent of this warrant article would move menthol and wintergreen under the flavored tobacco definition, and then ban sale of flavored tobacco products within the town of Brookline. There's nothing to say as far as the actual electronic devices with this warrant article. The definition was simply, or sorry, it appears on the warrant article in terms of definitions were updated to modernize the definitions, but in effect, it does not do anything to actually ban the use of electronic products in our town or sale of them.
Okay. Has, has advisory taken this up yet?
The subcommittee took it on tonight. Advisory takes it April 3rd.
What is, what did the subcommittee do, out of curiosity?
Can I say? Yeah, 3-1.
Of course, yeah. It's a public record. It was a, happened at a public meeting. No secrets here.
I didn't want to sway the vote unless it's going to sway in the good direction.
Well, if it was in your favor, you know, that's a good thing. Well, being, having grown up in a strong smoking family, I have developed an extreme aversion to any tobacco product, and I'm all in favor of trying to make them harder to obtain in any way, shape, or form. I feel for the merchants who are making a living off this, but I think the public health has to take precedence. And I feel bad, but...
I would agree. I, I grew up in a family where one parent smoked and the other was a radiologist who looked at pictures of lungs of people who smoked. And I will tell, he showed me those pictures on his little, very primitive machine, and they were pretty ugly-looking, so I, you know, smoking has been demonstrated to be so harmful to your health in so many ways, not only heart condition, but also all kinds of cancers and, you know, I think it's, unlike alcohol, which if you consume in moderation, apparently doesn't affect your health, whereas cigarettes, if you, even if you consume them in moderation, you can still get the problems, the health problems. So I'm, I'm for banning it. And I agree with you that it'll be hard on the merchants, and I'm hoping that they can find a way to, to augment that income in other ways, because, you know, replace the income that they lose. But I think health has to come first.
I agree. I mean, I grew up in a family of smokers also, back in the days when you didn't have seat belts, you're in a enclosed car with smoke all around, and somehow I survived. I don't know. Any rate, I think that, you know, last week's discussion, the only issue that really came up was sort of the tone between the advocates for the warrant article and those who were representing store owners. And I think that's very unfortunate. You know, we can't, we have to respect the fact that, you know, store owners are an important part of our community, they have to be given respect, and when we do something that's going to really hurt them, we have to be sympathetic, empathetic to their needs. But, you know, I think the substance of this article is, is good, and, you know, I support it. I just urge people to be a little more respectful of people's differences. And it wasn't you, but, you know, I'm just saying, you know, that was an issue that came up last week.
So I'm thinking about abstaining, because I still can't quite get, I think, to the point of full support. I actually would be in favor of outlawing tobacco because of the public health impacts. But the discussion that we had last week was more focused on that this was a proposal to remedy a problem going on with youth getting their hands on cigarettes and hooking them. And the premise was that they are getting this product through our physical merchants in Brookline. I am not convinced that it's a direct causal relationship from any of the information that I've been given. So the direct impact on the merchants, I, I do feel for them. I don't like the product, I, I don't like what it does, but it's legal. And so I'm uncomfortable kind of going to the point of, of this warrant article.
Care to say anything, or no? You don't have to.
I guess I do, actually.
You don't have to.
No, I mean, I'm happy to, to support the warrant article. I think my colleagues have said it, everything there is to say. I do feel for the merchants. I, I actually share Selectman Hamilton, or Select Person Hamilton's frustration about the conversation last week. I, I think Select Person Hamilton asked a direct question about where these, where youth, particularly in the high school, are getting these products, and got frankly, didn't get an answer to the question. But granted that, I am convinced that there is a, a solid public health rationale here. I am comfortable voting for this and banning flavored tobacco products.
Well, let me also add that, that our history has been that we have enacted bans, you know, chewing off a piece at a time. And I would go for the whole thing, but I know that it probably wouldn't pass immediately. But I do think chewing off a bit of it at a time is a, is at least a better way to do it than banning nothing at all. So, you know, not banning it at all. So that's why I would, I would go for...
Okay, so are there any, is the, is the wording okay?
Yeah, I think we beat that dead horse.
Okay, then, then we'll, I'll vote the, I'll, I'll move the warrant article as submitted with the appropriate change, instead of see if the town, it would be voted, the town will, and then removing anything relative thereto at the end. I'll move Article 19 as submitted with the appropriate changes. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Abstain.
And chair votes aye. So 4-0-1. And last, but maybe, maybe least, not least, is Article 21, which is a, really a technical, technical change memorializing kind of what we've been doing, but making it explicit that, and, and giving potential marijuana licenses notice that upfront, we will and we're empowered to consider the broad aspects of zoning and licensing right up front when we're negotiating host community agreements. I thought it was a good idea when it was presented to me. And any discussion from the board? Any disagreement? Yeah?
I'll just make a comment that shortly after our meeting, The Globe ran a story on, on cannabis companies and ways in which they manipulated towns and states to get around the restrictions on the number of pot shops that any individual company can own. I looked through our bylaws, and I think we addressed that issue fairly well, but, you know, we may want to just give some thought to, to that issue, you know, sometime, at some point in the future.
Right, and that's not within the scope here.
Yeah, it's not in the scope.
Right.
But, you know, our bylaws do give us, you know, certain rights that, you know, can address many of those problems, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? I'll therefore move a favorable action recommendation on Article 21, as submit with the appropriate change... change, the change would be voted that the town will amend, and removing or take any other action thereto at the end off of it. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectperson Franco.
Aye.
Selectperson Heller.
Aye.
Selectperson Green.
Aye.
Selectperson Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, I think that concludes our business for tonight.
Sure, we're done.